I mean, it's okay. I was, I was fine.
How's it reading tonight?
Is he me? That's okay. You guys are busy. Uh, it's amusing.
Yeah.
So you have a pretty good first.
I know. It's me like.
Dark in here? Feels dark. Okay. Uh, that's all good. Okay, um. Good evening, everyone. I'm now going to call the public hearing of Tuesday, February the 25th, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Now, this meeting is being convened in person and by electronic means. As such, council members may participate in person or by electronic means. And so we don't have anyone online. Is that correct? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Uh, members of the public can view, uh, the proceedings via live stream and YouTube link, uh, which will be posted on X at Van City Clerk. Now, I do want to acknowledge that we're hosting today's public hearing on the unceded territories of the Musqueam, the Squamish, and the Tsarite First Nations. And I do want to thank you for your generosity and your hospitality and the love and care you show this land that we get to live, work, and play on. And we talk about how, um, you know, we remind people that I think it's incumbent upon all of us that we unlearn what we've learnt in the past and learn the true history as to what's happened on these lands. And if we do that, we're going to build an incredibly beautiful and bright future full of love and prosperity, not just for us, um, but going out well past seven generations. And as an aside, you know, I do want to highlight, uh, for the group here. It was an honor and a privilege to be invited, um, to, uh, Musqueam yesterday, um, to, uh, be part of a historic, uh, to witness a historic event, um, where, um, YVR and the federal government, uh, is, uh, has, uh, um, worked with Musqueam to share revenues, uh, from the airport. So that was super cool and, um, um, congratulations. Now, in case of the emergency where we need to evacuate the building, I would like to point your direction to the glass doors. Just walk past the first pillar, turn left, walk down the stairs. If for whatever reason those exits are, uh, blocked, uh, there are four exits off to the side here. Um, please, uh, find one of them, um, and we'll show you how to, uh, get exit the chamber. Uh, please don't use the stairs. If you require accessibility assistance, please remain at your location and one of our, uh, wonderful security, uh, uh, team members will guide you to a safe location. Um, I'd also like to highlight the fact that there's a defibrillator at the end of the hallway. So if, uh, you know, if you feel something in your chest or you smell toast, let us know. We'll, uh, we'll come running. Um, I also do want to acknowledge, uh, the immense and amazing contributions of our team members, the people that choose to work at the city of Vancouver. And I do want to emphasize choose because everyone has a choice. Um, our people are absolutely amazing. We've had the benefit of working side by side with them for a couple of years, at least, some a little longer. And, um, I can tell you, um, we're so lucky that you choose to be here and, um, thank you much, uh, thanks a lot for being awesome. Okay, uh, can we please have roll call?
Yes. Mayor Simms in the chair, councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly has a leave of absence for personal reasons from six to eight this evening. Councillor Fry, I believe, is trying to get on the web, uh, so he'll be with us shortly. Councillor Montague.
President.
Councillor Claussen. Councillor Meisner. And Councillor Joe.
President.
The hearing has formed. Mayor Simms.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, before we begin, I do have some announcements. Uh, the public may, uh, participate by speaking person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support of or opposed to the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers representing four or more individuals or groups, including themselves, will have eight minutes to speak. Each individual or group being represented must confirm their representation by introducing themselves either in person or online. Individuals represented by another speaker cannot also speak independently. Speaker, uh, speakers may, uh, only speak once and should follow along on X at Van City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online mayor and council public hearing feedback web form. This link will also be posted on X. Any speakers who pre-registered with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next so the clerk may advance your slides. I also want to note the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and team members, we will avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, role, or title. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage, heritage designation. Council members may clarify, uh, may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or request technical advice from team members, but should save debate for after the close of the speakers' list. After hearing from speakers, council may, one, approve the application in principle, two, refuse the application, or three, refer the application to team members for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on March the 4th, two thousand and twenty-five at 3:00 PM. Now, the first, uh, item on the agenda is, uh, item number one, CD dash one rezoning, 282 West Forty-Ninth Avenue, Langara Family YMCA. Now, before we begin this agenda item, if anyone believes that they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to declare it. Does anybody have a conflict? Um, uh, nope. Great. Um, so the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the Musqueam Capital Corp. to rezone 282 West Forty-Ninth Avenue from CD one, one oh three Comprehensive Development District to a new CD one Comprehensive Development District to permit the redevelopment of the existing Langara Family YMCA recreational facility to a mixed-use development with three buildings at a height of eight, three, thirty-three, and thirty-seven stories, containing eighty-eight social housing units, three hundred and eight secured rental units, and two hundred and sixty-nine strata titled residential units with a community center facility and associated childcare and a ground floor commercial space. A floor space ratio of six point six six and a building height of a hundred and nineteen meters or three hundred and nine feet with additional height for amenity space or mechanical opportunances are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design, and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Two pieces of correspondence in support, twenty pieces of correspondence in opposition, and eight pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Great. Thank you very much. Now, this is the first call for speakers. Any speaker for this item who wishes to speak to council, please call toll-free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code, uh, one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers' list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers' list. Now, we do have our team members from planning, urban design, and sustainability here to present the application. And councillor Montague, SCU in the queue?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I understand, uh, there's no speakers here, and I'm happy to move to waive this staff presentation, but I understand the applicant has a presentation that we could see.
Yeah. So, uh, could we have a seconder? Great. Um, great. Go ahead. I, I'm sorry, councillor Claussen. Did, did you want to say something? So just.
I'll just, um, I'll, I'll just comment to say that, um, I don't, if the, I, I wouldn't mind seeing this presentation, and I know that we've got two other, uh, items that don't have any speakers, so then we might look at those potentially. But I think this is a pretty significant project. I wouldn't mind, uh, having a look at it if that's okay.
Okay. All right. So we will, uh, do exactly that. Thank you very much. Okay. Um. Sorry. Oh, yes, we have to vote on that. Okay. Okay. And then, so, uh, all, all in favor, uh, seconder for the rescission of councillor Montague's, um. Great. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Great. Uh, that has been rescinded. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, we'd love to see the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Ken McDougall, and I am the planner leading the review of this rezoning application for the Langara YMCA site at 282 West Forty-Ninth Avenue. This application has been brought forward by the Musqueam Capital Corporation, the economic development arm of the Musqueam Indian Band, in partnership with YMCA BC and Townline. This is Musqueam's first rezoning application as the lead applicant within the city of Vancouver. Before we can get into the details of the proposal, I would like to invite Elder Charlotte Murrins, language and cultural lead with the Musqueam Capital Corporation, to make an introductory statement.
Can I put that screen down? Oh, okay. That's good.
Do you want me to tilt it down?
Yeah, that'd be great. Haidchka Kent for the introduction. Ah, CM, Siaya. It's app, Ueliol. I, Tanushwalawan, Konsi, Quatsnalahtz. Dear respected ones, I hope you're all well today, and I'm so happy to be here with you. In the presence of my creator and my ancestors, I welcome you to the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of Musqueam's first people. I'm a direct descendant of the first people of Musqueam. I'm an elder, and I work with Musqueam Capital Corporation on this development. Mayor Simms, I raise my hands to the city of Vancouver leadership and staff for their commitment to uphold the integrity of the principles of the undrip strategy and the five-year action plan. The pathway toward reconciliation is founded on mutually respectful working relationships, and it's my, been my privilege to contribute to this project with such dedicated groups of individuals. Haidchka Kent. This commitment has been a transformative journey as we navigate these historic unprecedented times toward a future constructed on a foundation of understanding, shared respect, and justice. When asked what this project means to this Musqueam elder, I offer the following. It means economic reconciliation and empowerment. This project goes just beyond another development. It serves as a significant demonstration of reconciliation in action. It places Musqueam at the core of this initiative, empowering us to take the lead in this process. This collaboration between the city of Vancouver and Musqueam Indian Band is focused on creating a future where my people thrive economically on our own land. It's about building long-term security for Musqueam. At the heart of this vision is the Musqueam-owned rental building, which serves as a foundation for long-term financial stability while addressing the significant rental shortage in the area. It's not just a means of long-term economic empowerment for our people. It serves as a beacon of hope for present day and future generations to flourish on our lands. It's also about celebrating and honoring Musqueam culture. This development shall authentically represent Musqueam's ancestral language, art, and rich cultural heritage that has existed in this region for thousands of years. It will be an inclusive space where Musqueam's history, ancestral language, and culture is represented, preserved, and celebrated. It's also about collaborative partnerships for a shared vision. We take pride in partnering with the city of Vancouver, the YMCA, and Townline homes on this groundbreaking journey. Together, we're creating much more than just buildings. We're establishing a model community that will benefit everyone. We are making meaningful progress toward economic reconciliation, cultural representation, and sustainable development while ensuring that we align with the needs of the Langara neighborhood. It's also about Musqueam leadership and a vision for the future. This project is led by Musqueam and shaped by our vision, mission, and values for sustainable development. These values of respect, inclusiveness, and shared responsibility are evident through various aspects of our development. It creates a pathway towards self-determination for the Musqueam members while thoughtfully collaborating with our partners in a good way. Finally, it's about a legacy of sustainability and prosperity. As the original stewards of these lands and waters, at the core of our teachings is a commitment to achieve a sustainable balance through innovative planning, responsible land management, and resilient development, all while ensuring the needs of future generations are thoughtfully considered. Other priority considerations for this development are that it is economically viable, environmentally sustainable, and guided by generations of oral tradition and Musqueam's teachings. It's hapka.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me. Just a quick tactical difficulty. Have this rectified in a moment. The, I'm not sure if the slide, the presentation is visible. Apologies. Am I not? Should I leave and come back?
Yeah, try that.
Up now? Yes?
All right.
Perfect. I was going to ask someone to crack a joke if, uh, we couldn't get it up. So, good thing.
All right. So we're back up. Thank you very much, Charlotte, for that. Um, just a reminder that this rezoning application is for the Langara YMCA site at 282 West Forty-Ninth Avenue, and the application is being considered under the transit-oriented areas rezoning policy and the Canby Corridor Plan. The rezoning site highlighted at the center in red is located along Forty-Ninth Avenue. It's approximately two hundred and fifty meters from the Langara Forty-Ninth Avenue Canada Line Station at the intersection of Canby and Forty-Ninth. Site's about one kilometer south from the Oak Ridge MTC redevelopment, currently under construction with towers up to fifty-two stories. The site is also one point five kilometers north of the Pearson Dogwood or Canby Gardens site with approved tower heights up to thirty-five stories. This large site has an area of just over eight thousand square meters, or eighty-seven thousand square feet, with frontages of, uh, around two hundred and fifty feet along Forty-Ninth and three hundred and fifty feet along Alberta Street. The surrounding land uses are generally residential, recreational, and institutional, with Langara Park and Langara College to the east, Langara Golf Course to the south, and the Langara Estates Town Home Development to the west and southwest. The site is owned by YMCA BC and currently developed with a two-story YMCA recreational facility, including surface parking on the southern portion of the lot. Site is within proximity to a number of parks, recreation spaces, and childcare facilities. It is well-served by public transit, being in proximity, again, to the Canada Line Station, and also in proximity to frequent bus service along Forty-Ninth Avenue connecting Metro Town and UBC. The property is also approximately three blocks west of the Ontario Greenway along Ontario Street, which is a bikeway linking Falls Creek to East Kent Avenue South along the Fraser River. In terms of the policy context, the site falls within an, an approved transit-oriented area and can be considered under the city's TOA policy. The site is also within the Canby Corridor Plan area. In this case, the enabling rezoning policy is the TOA policy, where the Canby Corridor Plan serves as an additional guidance for redevelopment. Under the TOA policy, rezoning applications are expected to build on or build on approved area plan goals and objectives where applicable, respond to existing and emerging neighborhood conditions, and contribute to affordable housing options. The site is within the four-hundred-meter TOA catchment around the, the Skytrain station, where densities up to four FSR and up to twelve stories in height are generally anticipated. However, it's important to note that the TOA policy includes provisions related to reconciliation, allowing for rezoning applications to be considered for residential and one hundred percent commercial projects, which meet the needs of the nations to advance the city's undrip commitments and reconciliation, reconciliation goals, that these projects may exceed the heights and densities outlined in the policy and are to be considered on a case-by-case basis. Looking at the Canby Corridor Plan, this site is one of several identified unique sites. For this large, unique site, the plan supports redevelopment with new housing options and onsite amenities within proximity of rapid transit. The plan guidance also contains inclusionary affordable housing objectives similar to the TOA policy expectations. The plan also recognizes the significant community-serving role of the site, and community-serving uses are to be prioritized through the rezoning process. So this application, which was submitted in September of two thousand and twenty-four, is for a mixed-use development with three standalone buildings of varying heights, including a thirty-seven-story strata building with two hundred and sixty-nine units, a thirty-three-story rental building with three hundred and eight units and ground floor commercial space along Forty-Ninth Avenue, and an eight-story mixed-use building, which includes a new YMCA community center facility on the first two floors with an associated forty-nine-space childcare facility, and six stories of proposed social housing with eighty-eight units. Both the childcare and social housing units are proposed as nonprofit-owned and operated by the YMCA. Here is an illustrative view of the ground of the proposed building and its emerging tower context. Tower heights of thirty, thirty-five, and up to fifty-two stories are proposed, approved, or under construction in emerging nodes and municipal town centers along the Canada Line. As well, an emerging tower context is illustrated around the site based on the TOE, TOA policy. For the social housing, one hundred percent of the units must be owned by a nonprofit or government agency, and at least thirty percent of the units must be affordable to households with incomes at or below the housing income limits, or HILLS rates, as published by BC Housing. The HILLS household income, shown in the right column, represents the maximum income to rent a unit. Shown in the left column illustrates the HILLS monthly rent range per unit type, whi, which is no more than thirty percent of annual income. The project proposes twenty percent of the strata residential floor area, the eighty-eight units, as social housing to be owned and operated by YMCA BC. For the secured rental housing component, the project includes approximately three hundred and eight units. This table shows the average market rents in newer, newer rental buildings on the west side in the left column and the average household income served on the right. The market rental housing component will provide options that are more affordable than homeownership. In terms of public notification, the standard two-week virtual question-and-answer period was held from September twenty-fifth to October eighth of two thousand and twenty-four. Eighty-one pieces of correspondence were received through the application review. Comments in support for the proposal noted, uh, support for the proposed amount of housing, including rental, social, and strata housing, support for the height and density, given the proximity of the development to Skytrain and a post-secondary institution, and general support for the YMCA as a valued part of the neighborhood, noting an upgrade is exciting and overdue. Comments of concern noted the proposed development does not replace the existing swimming pool, which is considered a valued asset to the community, as well as general concern related to local amenities and recreational services, concern over transportation infrastructure, traffic congestion, and pedestrian safety related to a proposed influx of residents, and the proposal not being compatible with the existing neighborhood. and the proposal not being compatible with the existing neighborhood character. In response to the concerns about the lack of a replacement pool, the applicant team noted that YMCA BC conducted a thorough review of their role and identified key areas for improvement. These included addressing housing shortages, providing accessible childcare, combating social isolation, supporting health and wellness, and expanding community programming. To achieve these goals, the new YMCA will prioritize essential services and multipurpose spaces that include recreational opportunities over traditional amenities like a pool or large gymnasium. Regarding traffic, the site is well-served with transit options, including the nearby Skytrain Station, bus connections between Metro Town and UBC, as well as parking and loading, which are required to meet the parking bylaw. Reductions can be considered at the development permit stage with an acceptable transportation demand management plan. Street improvements along Alberta Street and improvements at the intersection of Columbia and 49th Avenue, including installation of an upgraded traffic signal and contributions to traffic coming measures to improve overall safety are also required. Regarding the fit within the existing neighborhood, the proposed tower forms, uses, and proportion of social housing units are generally consistent with the intent of the TOA policy and Canby Corridor Plan. Staff have prepared conditions to improve the fit of the proposal with the existing and emerging context by strengthening the pedestrian-oriented experience with further activation of the public realm, maximizing the openness between buildings and building upon the project's architectural expression and character. This application is subject to a negotiated CAC process under the CAC policy for rezonings. Under the policy, in-kind amenities may be owned by the city, senior levels of government, or indigenous or nonprofit organizations, subject to a number of conditions to ensure ongoing long-term use and availability of the amenity as if it were city-owned and operated. As in-kind CACs, the applicant has offered 88 units of social housing valued at approximately $43 million, a 49-space childcare facility valued at approximately $9 million. Again, both are to be owned and operated by the YMCA, a nonprofit corporation. The proposal also includes 308 secured rental units to be 100% owned by the Musqueam Indian Band. Staff highlight that is part of economic reconciliation. The city will not pursue the policy expectations for 20% below-market rental housing. This will contribute towards creating a sustainable revenue stream for the Musqueam Nation and help address significant housing needs on reserve. The project is estimated to deliver just over $18 million in DCLs and just over $1 million in public art contributions. The overall value of DCLs, public art contributions, are estimated at approximately $71 million. Staff note that the proposal's contribution to economic reconciliation is immeasurable. In conclusion, the proposed land use and form of development are generally consistent with the intent of the TOA rezoning policy and Canby Corridor Plan. As well, the proposal includes significant public benefit and represents a unique opportunity to contribute towards long-term economic prosperity and self-sufficiency for the Musqueam people. Staff support the proposal, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Would the applicant team like to present the application? If, well, you're here.
Thank you. I believe there's a slide, three slides that the clerk may put up. Are the slides up by any chance?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Kent, for the amazing introduction of our project. My name is Troy Abramitis. I'm the Senior Development Manager with Musqueam Capital Corp., and I'm pleased to be here today to speak on behalf of this application. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, a Musqueam-led project that strengthens the fabric of this community, centered around connection, well-being, and resilience. It includes a revitalized YMCA, childcare, wellness programs, shared spaces, and a mix of affordable housing, rental, and condominiums, providing stability, opportunity, and a true sense of home for generations to come. Next slide, please. The architecture itself reflects Musqueam's deep connection to this land. Inspired by the layers of the forest, the forest floor, understory, and canopy, the design symbolizes community, growth, and resilience. The towers resembling cedar trees, as you saw earlier in Kent's presentation, stand as a tribute to Musqueam culture, incorporating natural materials, wood-like finishes, and earth tones that ground the development and its surroundings. Placemaking is at the heart of this vision. Thoughtfully designed public pathways, gathering spaces, and native landscaping foster movement and connection, ensuring a welcoming, pedestrian-friendly environment. Every element of this project integrates Musqueam values, sustainability, and cultural identity, making this project not just a place to live, but a lasting expression of Musqueam presence and stewardship. Public art from Musqueam artists will further enrich these spaces, giving the development a true sense of place and honoring the narrative traditions and rich history of this nation. This is more than just a development. It is a commitment to community, culture, and will leave a lasting impact. It reflects Musqueam's vision of inclusivity, resilience, and sustainability, ensuring that future generations have a place to thrive. Together, we do more than just build. We have, we're working towards creating a legacy that honors the past, strengthens the present, and inspires the future. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and now I pass it on to Heidi Worthington, President and CEO of the YMCA. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Troy. I hope you can hear me okay this evening with my voice. I'm struggling today, and generally I don't struggle to speak, as my staff and colleagues know. The YMCA has been supporting the community in Langara since 1978, and we recognize the limitations that our current facility has, being 47 years old. We also acknowledge and recognize that the needs of the Langara community have significantly shifted since the 70s. It is more diverse in every single way, in ages, backgrounds, abilities. We also have learned and better appreciate that to really support improving people's overall health, we have to look beyond physical health, and we need to support areas in the social and economic determinants of health. And this is the work that the YMCA currently does. In fact, it's the majority now of the work that we do in community. This can look like mental health supports for youth, leadership development, newcomer supports, employment training, as well as childcare, and in this case, affordable housing. And we're so excited to bring all these services to the Langara community in addition to recreation and fitness programming. It's with this focus on equity-deserving groups that we aim to ignite a feeling of belonging in Langara and to champion health equity. We know that where the Y is present, we have this ability to bring people together, to lift them up, and help them achieve their fullest potential. And we're very honored to work with Townline and with Musqueam on this truly unique project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions from council to our team members or the applicant team, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? And Counselor Meisner, you are up. Wait, sorry. Pardon? Okay, great. Counselor Meisner.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mayor. Thanks to the applicant for the presentation. I had a few questions. Council's been receiving emails concerned about the lack of the pool. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to some of those constraints, I guess rationale as to not including the pool in the redevelopment, whoever would be most appropriate.
Thank you for that question. We've been hearing that, too. And we really appreciate the disappointment. It was a very tough decision for the YMCA when we were balancing what are the services that we think the community needs versus what we can afford. And we made the choice that we did to broaden the community services that we're providing to better support the social and economic services in addition to recreation and fitness.
Okay, okay. How about, I'm not familiar, I used to go to the Y downtown, so I know that facility really well. But is there a gym currently onsite as well, a fitness center? And if so, is that going to be replaced in the new development?
Yes, there currently is a fitness center at Langara, and there will be fitness programming at the new center.
Okay, programming is different than a gym, though. Is it similar?
Free weights and equipment, spin bikes, and classes, fitness classes. So there'll be still fitness programming?
Okay, okay. Just going back to the pool, can you just explain to me, you mentioned there were some constraints, like I'm not quite clear from your answer. Are they financial constraints? Are they site constraints? Or is it a funding issue? It just, I'm just wondering what your plan is in terms of, are you planning on building another YMCA or YWCA in the area to kind of compensate for the loss of that facility? I'd just love more information.
Sure. I think one of the things that's been sobering for the Y, as well as municipalities across Canada, is the cost of building and operating aquatic centers. I think it's pretty easy in the media to read just how challenging that is, particularly post-pandemic. We've noticed a real significant change in costs. We do operate community centers without aquatics. Prince George is an excellent example of the family YMCA in Prince George, which is a fantastic community facility that is really enjoyed by the public and members there. So it's entirely possible to bring people together to advance their physical, emotional, social, and mental health without having the aquatics facility.
Okay, okay, thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah, I, thanks. I'll just make sure my mic's on. I'm gonna follow up on the pool also, and I'll direct this question to the applicant. And going back to my time on park board, seven years ago when I left now, there were some live potential partnership conversations, or I would say discussion or engagement between park board reps and then Y reps around the ability to partner on a pool. And I think part of that was around recognizing economies of scale. There were different models between the park board having publicly open facilities and the model that the Y had in terms of its membership fee and structure. So I'm curious whether or not, how, whether those advanced, or we really looked at those opportunities? Because I can tell you the pool, people are passionate, and other fitness facilities are nice, but they don't replace it. So did we fully, did those conversations continue with the park board about the possibility of partnering? Or what's the stat, what was, how did that go? What was the status?
Yes, so a few things that you mentioned there. Certainly nothing replaces a pool. And I'm a passionate swimmer, past lifeguard, past swim instructor, so I really feel that. We did have conversations with the park board. Unfortunately, we weren't successful.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna press you a little bit and say, can you give us some context as to why? Because I think people are really trying to understand here, and if this is, I mean, this is pretty far advanced, but I'm looking to see if there's some learnings here around why didn't they advance? Is there, can you give us some color on that?
I think at that point in time, there were other aquatics facilities in the area that were better suited to meet those needs than investing in the Langara location. So that's one of the things, if we take a look at the footprint, that there are other aquatic facilities in the area that were felt to be able to deliver on the community needs.
Yeah, that's new to me. Which ones were those?
I'd have to, I think Oak Ridge was one. Marvin, do you remember one of the other? Oak Crest?
There's no pool at Oak Ridge.
Oak Crest, sorry, was one. But what was one of the others? I'm trying to remember now. Unfortunately, it was before my time leading the YMCA. But there were two or three other aquatics facilities in the South Vancouver area that were intended to address some of those aquatics users' needs.
At the time, I'm not sure what those are. Okay, I'm gonna move on. Maybe staff can come back on that one later. My other question's around the childcare. How many spaces are you contemplating? Just trying to pull that out of the?
Forty-nine.
Pardon?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine? Okay. And then I have, thank you very much for that. I have a question to direct to staff. One of the other comments that have been sent into councilors has been around, why isn't this generating community amenities? And can you just, you had a slide that talked about the value of the social housing units, the childcare cost, and the fact they are paying utilities, DCL. But can you just talk about why this isn't generating a cash CAC? I know that's a question we've gotten quite a bit from community members who've written in.
It is, thank you for the question. It is generating a CAC. In this case, it is the social housing units being proposed, the 88 units.
That's what my question was, why it's not generating a cash CAC? But it's the in-kind, because like, so could you just provide some context for perhaps members of public art is familiar with the distinction or how that?
Sure, essentially through the CAC negotiation process, the amenities proposed essentially eat up. The lift or the ability to generate additional cash through the DCLs, the public art contributions, the social housing, and the childcare, so there is no additional lift available for?
Because the value is coming in kind versus in cash, right? Okay, that's what I was looking to clarify for the public. So there is a value in the amenity package. It's just coming in the form of the social housing units, the childcare, et cetera, correct?
Precisely.
Okay, thanks. I'll leave it there. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So to continue the topic of the aquatic center, so you know, I think council receives a lot of emails, even letters, and also phone calls from the community regarding the aquatic center. You know, you can tell the disappointment. So I wonder, you know, I guess that's the question to staff. What are the community engagement we have done to reach out to the neighborhood? Explain to them, and you know, and also listen to them, their concerns.
Thank you for that. Ken McDougall from rezoning. In terms of the outreach, this rezoning proposal went through the standard processes. We hosted information on the Shape Your City platform. We sent out mail-out postcards and installed, had a site sign installed on the site indicating what the proposal was. We hosted online question-and-answer engagement tools and solicited questions and feedback, and we definitely heard the concern around the pool. I believe that the applicant as well, the YMCA, hosted some information sessions at their at their facility, at the existing Langara facility, to have discussions about their vision for the future for their site, as well with their members.
Okay, so can also applicant talk about the community engagement part?
Yes, so that's correct, that we did have, excuse me, an open house and opportunities for all of the members, as well as community members locally, to come in and see some of the concept boards of the new imagined facility. And we had conversations at that point in time, certainly about the aquatic center. Also, too, because currently at Langara, the aquatic center has not been operating these past years because of the expenses to be able to maintain such an old facility. So I think already the community has experienced not being able to use a pool for these past two years. So we know it's been an area of sensitivity, which is why we wanted to share with everyone the other services that we're bringing, which currently can't be properly brought to the community with the current facility that we have. So from that perspective, we are excited to talk about some of the new newcomer mental health camp programs and other employment training, some of those other programs that we were more excited to bring to the community that we think will better meet more of the needs in the community.
Thanks. You mentioned how long the aquatic center was closed? Three years?
Three years.
Okay, wow. Okay, thank you. That's all my question. Thanks, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Dominado?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Some of mine have been asked about the aquatic center swimming pool, but just following up on the subject of the CAC being the social housing. Could staff just comment on, so it is seen as a contribution, the social housing component, and then we have conditions included here with respect to the social housing covenants, as well as conditions on the YMCA. Can you just comment on that and what the implications are of that for overall maintenance of the site and including the community space?
Yes, thank you. Ken McDougall from rezoning. In terms of the obligations of function, so the proposed in-kind childcare and social housing units through our policies are able to be owned by other government entities and nonprofit corporations such as the YMCA. With that, there are requirements that essentially attempt to secure the function long-term of the facility, similar to the way it would be, it would function long-term as a city facility. So there are requirements around maintenance and other financial implications, as well as right of first refusal should it no longer function or no longer be used as it is intended, that the city could that the city could essentially buy back the facility at a nominal fee, for instance. There are conditions like that for the in-kind CACs.
Okay, and what, in an instance, like a nominal fee in that case, what would that look like typically in arrangements you've seen in the past?
Nominal fee?
Grace Chang, Director of Long-Term Financial Strategy and Treasury. Typically, the situation is that all in-kind CAC, they are fully paid for and funded through landlift. That's the reason why if the amenity ceased to operate as it is intended, the city can actually take it over through a nominal fee of like a dollar. The reason for that is because it's already paid for in the first round.
Okay, thank you for that. And then just in terms of the Ys required obviously for overall maintenance as well, both the, I think the social housing as well as the childcare and other facilities. And what means do they have in terms of managing that, those costs over time? Can they incur debt? What does that look like for them?
Your question, sorry, your question is about the ability to take on debt for maintenance. Typically for in-kind CAC that are being owned and operated by nonprofit or senior government, the arrangement is that debt cannot be placed on the in-kind amenity if it is for operational or other reasons. However, if it is for major capital maintenance or renewal, that debt can be placed on the amenity. And again, the rationale for that is because for the first round of the construction, there really needs to be no debt because it's all paid for by landlift. That was, that was the rationale.
But for you, you said for major capital?
Yeah, maintenance, say for example, 30 years from now, maybe there needs to be some sort of building envelope upgrade, that kind of thing. So that can be put in there and all these are actually part of the CAC policy and procedures as well.
Okay, thank you. I'll pause there. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so seeing no one else in the queue, this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445. Before the close of the speakers list, the phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We're now going to hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. And so I already know the answer to my question. We do have a couple of people online. So the first speaker is Cynthia Fan, online. Cynthia, are you there? Oh, I'm sorry, you're here. Magic. Hi, please go ahead.
Hi, I was not expecting to be first. I am not a politician or a land developer, but I live in this neighborhood, so I thought I'd come here and use my voice. I must say that I really think that you should not accept the proposal to rezone this neighborhood. What I understand about it is that this proposal will allow the developers an FSR of 6.66, where the FSR is currently 0.75, which is an increase of more than eight. These buildings that are being proposed are over 30 stories tall and completely out of scale with the neighborhood that I know and that I grew up on. And what it sounds like to me is that we are not getting the good end of the stick. We are losing potentially a swimming pool. And we are on top of that, being pressured with an enormous construction project. And that'll increase density and traffic. And I don't think it's worth it. I think it's good to develop the area. It's inevitable. Vancouver is a growing city. But I don't think that this proposal is genuine when it says that it has the community in its heart. That I do not believe. So I came here to say that because I live in this neighborhood, because my parents live in this neighborhood and I want them to have things that they can do. I don't, I don't want recreational opportunities. I would like for there to be a swimming pool, an amenities, a gymnasium, and green space. And I do not want these essentially skyscrapers in the neighborhood. So I cannot vote, but I urge you, council members who can vote, to really consider if you think that this is a good proposal. If you think that this will genuinely benefit the community, building two 30-plus story buildings in this neighborhood that is already on the lower socioeconomic spectrum. Yeah. I guess that's what I came here to say. I just, I can't trust this proposal. Because the, what is it, the ratio? The FSR, the floor space ratio is going to essentially increase from 0.75 to 6.66. Six-six-six. That's insane. And there is a lot of pressure being put on this existing neighborhood and not a lot of amenities are actually coming in. It's very vague right now. There's going to be recreational opportunities, maybe childcare facilities, but nothing that the existing population can genuinely enjoy. So, yeah. If you really do believe that this is a project with heart and soul, I cannot tell you how to vote, but I speak for myself and I speak for the people who couldn't come, people who are probably cooking dinner and just getting off work right now. I want to come here and use my voice because I can and I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel strongly about this. I feel a lot better just letting that out regardless of the final decision. But thank you so much for hearing me and it's an honor to be here to be a citizen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Cynthia. The, we do have another speaker, Sarah MacLeod. Sarah, are you on the line? She's here as well? Sorry. Where are all these people coming from?
Hi, thank you. Thanks, council and mayor and everyone not sitting on a cushion. Thank you, Cynthia. I just want to first just like support everything Cynthia just said. And thank you for coming to speak. That's amazing. I agree with everything she said, as I just said. I don't believe a lot of these towers are helping affordability, but I'm going to actually just focus on one question that came up with the councillor's questions about, and I'm sorry if I misinterpret this wrong, please clarify it after, but the maybe collaboration or speaking with of the park board. And also because I sounded like you guys got a lot of letters from swimmers or people who want an aquatic center. They're probably not here tonight because they're all at the park board meeting going on hour six of, you know, being told that they're going to lose their 50-meter pool and it's going to be a 25-meter pool and I, I want to apologize if any spitballing I do now is ignorant. Because I don't know, but it's interesting being asked, you know, if there was a conversation with the park board because, you know, the swimmers are losing, potentially losing their 50-meter pool because they're trying to push in a leisure pool. Because there's so much need for accessible pool space and leisure pool space in the city. So, yeah, I'm just wondering, like, seems like enough people want it in this place too. And maybe if there were more pools in the city in some of these upcoming developments, then staff wouldn't feel like they have to squish, you know, an accessible leisure pool into like a training facility where people train to the athletes and all that. So again, sorry if there isn't that overlap of discussion. And I'm suggesting it. And if it's not allowed, again, sorry, but it, I think that a lot of problems to be solved require collaboration and just, I think it's always good when we work together. So if there is a way to collaborate with, you know, the park board in any way, or at least discuss with them, because then maybe if they knew a leisure pool was popping up somewhere in the area that could support some people, then maybe it might help, you know, the athletes somewhere else keep their training space. So that's the only point I have on this, but then obviously I don't agree with all the high density and stuff like that. I digress and I, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. The third speaker who is in person as well is Anne Dewar.
Good evening. It's actually Dr. Anne Dewar. I'm a retired associate professor of nursing from University of British Columbia. I would like to support the comments of the first speaker, Cynthia. You are well-prepared and most eloquent in your statistics and thank you. I, as I said, live in the neighborhood and the idea of this level of congestion is really very upsetting. I mean, and there is research on the health effects of people living in very, very high rises. And when you hear about these proposals, you never hear anything about that. Secondly, I'd like to know if there's any consideration to the congestion on hospitals in the area for this amount of density. These things don't seem to be discussed or brought out. And as somebody living in the area, is there any idea when it's proposed that this project might start? Can anybody answer that question or even how long it would take?
Sorry, council isn't able to answer questions from speakers.
You're not able to answer questions from speakers? Why not?
It's, it's just in the protocol, like, there are ample times to reach out to councillors or the mayor before, you know, this comes to public hearing, but once we're in public hearing, speakers have an opportunity to speak and we listen.
Okay, well, I would like to, I do think that this level of densification is pretty remarkable, for want of a better word. And there's great congestion along 49th in terms of bus routes. The buses going along out to UBC already are very, very congested. So I hope that some thoughts been given to that as well.
Thank you very much, doctor. Clerk, do we have any other speakers online?
No.
No, okay. So this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445. Before the close of the speakers list, the phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. So we're now going to take a five-minute break or a five-minute recess for, and wait for any additional speakers to call in or come forward to the podium. All right. So we're gonna get started again. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, clerk, do we have any additional speakers online or in person to provide?
Yes, I am. Okay, awesome. Thank you. So once again, I want to make-
Sorry, Mayor, that was our operator.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm just checking if we have anybody online.
Okay. Uh, seeing no further speakers, the speakers.
I'm, I'm sorry. We do have two online.
Okay.
Um, we have a speaker Vivian Murns Norrato.
Uh, Vivian, are you on the line?
I'm on line.
Vivian?
Yeah.
Great. Hi, uh, welcome. Uh, Vivian, sir, can I just ask you, are you a resident of Vancouver?
I am. Okay. I am on the phone.
Okay, great. Um, are you, um, a resident of Vancouver?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Vivian Murns. She's speaking. Am I going now? Hello, Mayor. Yes, I am. I am here. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. And if you're following online, you may want to, uh, turn your, um, uh, your, uh, speaker off.
Okay. I've muted the computer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I'm gonna restart your timer. Uh, please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Sim. Good evening, council. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I appreciate the presentation given this evening, um, with respect to the rezoning and the development of the Langara YMCA property. I am in total favor of this work. Our city is growing. Our city, oh, I've muted the computer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I'm gonna restart the timer. Uh, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Sorry, um, I am having issues just because when I muted the computer, I could not quite hear. He is in behind me a few minutes. So anyway, I'm in favor of this development. The city is growing. We need to grow with the city. And when I say that, I mean Musquiam has every right and every rightful place to take their spot with economic development and to be partners creating these type of developments that will benefit not only our people, our community, but also our neighbors in the Langara area. This brings not only homes for people to call that community their home, to build their families. They have, and there's a great need for housing in our city. And I think it's very important that we create really great spaces for people to be able to build their families, to be able to call it home. Musquiam is a beautiful area. The whole city of Vancouver has grown up here. And we welcome these developments because it not only helps us, it helps everybody. I understand the loss of a swimming pool. I do get the impact that that has. And I'm sure that places like Hillcrest or UBC Pool have helped to support the community members who have lost that pool over the past two or three years. They've had to be able to come up with other solutions or other areas that they can go to actually be able to swim and practice their sport. I understand that the loss of that pool is very detrimental. And I also applaud the other locations where you can go to swim and where you can go to practice and thrive in the water that you like to swim in. With respect to the community buildings and the aesthetics of the buildings, we at Musquiam find it very, very important to not only share and express who we are, but also to help, help everybody understand who we are as a people. That for over 12,000 years, we've had archaeological history here. And we've grown with the city as the city has grown around. We look forward to these partnerships. We look forward to continually being neighbors with those that surround us. So I applaud our team. I applaud all of the hard work of everybody who has put their heart and soul into these types of developments. And I thank the Vancouver City Mayor and Council for their consideration, their partnerships with Musquiam and our neighbors to build and continue to create this amazing, beautiful city that we now call Vancouver. Thank you for the time.
Great. Thank you very much, Vivian. Um, the next speaker we have is Tommy Yee. Tommy, are you there?
Hello. Yes, I am.
Hi. And Tommy, can you please tell us, are you a resident of Vancouver?
I am.
Great. Thank you very much. Please go ahead.
Okay. So I would like to present my thoughts and ideas on this proposal. So on behalf of the current and future members of Langara Family Y, I call upon the developers, Musquiam Capital Corporation and Town Line, along with YMCA BC, to reconsider decision not to include a gymnasium and aquatic facility for replacement YMCA facility. Since 1978, this site has always had a full-size gymnasium and a 25-meter swimming pool, along with associated steam room, sauna, and a hot tub. Our YMCA facility needs all these amenities served as memberships from early childhood to our golden years. A daycare is a great start. We want a bridge for children and youth group activities like basketball, volleyball, indoor hockey, and very popular pickleball for not be members for the Y. I'm afraid that when we, the current adults pass on, there will be no more new members to carry on. Our children need a place to grow and develop. I consider myself very fortunate to have had this chance, starting as a very young, immature person to step into becoming an adult to a lifelong membership down here as a member and a volunteer. So please reconsider and restore the gymnasium and aquatic portion to the redevelopment application. I know it will make a huge difference for future generations. These are the sentiments and the current membership and the staff of the Langara Family Y. So thank you for listening. I agree with the opportunity.
Great. Thank you very much, Tommy. Um, clerk, do we have any more speakers in the queue?
None online, Mayor. Anybody here? No.
Great. Okay. Uh, seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Uh, seeing that, uh, there are fewer, no public comments received after 5:00 PM, I'm now closing the receipt of public comments. Um, does the applicant team have any closing comments?
We just wanted to say thank you very much for the opportunity to present the proposal. And, uh, we look forward to your consideration. Thank you very much.
And thank you. Um, do our team members have any closing comments?
None. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, does council have any final questions for our team members? And I see, um, there are.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, not questions. I was gonna move the motion to speak to it, but I'll wait for others to ask questions. Sorry.
Okay. Um, councillor, okay. So, sure, that councillor, councillor Joe, did you have any, uh, final questions?
Oh, just a quick question. You know, one speaker asked about how when this project will be starting and when the project will be complete. And I ask this question to our team member on behalf of the speaker.
Sure. I mean, um, can we talk on the rezoning center? Um, high level estimate, I mean, we're at the rezoning stage now. It still requires other levels of permitting, development permitting and building permitting. I believe those, uh, steps will be moved forward. The applicant intends to move forward on those fairly quickly. Um, and then you would have a construction time window, um, estimates potentially two years to four years through permitting and construction.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my question.
Thank you, councillor Joe. Okay. Um, and I'm assuming everyone else is, uh, on the next one. So, uh, clerk, uh, do we receive any additional, uh, public comments since the close of public comments?
No.
Okay. Uh, so council will now make its decision on this application. Do we have a mover of the recommendations?
So moved.
Great. Councillor Kirby, uh, uh, seconded by councillor Claussen. Okay. Um, is there any discussion? Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so, you know, I, I signed the park board previously and I know how passionate swimmers are. Um, I wouldn't put it on one specific nonprofit to deliver a pool, but I will note, just in terms of level setting, some of the discussion tonight, there are not other options in the neighborhood when you look at the, for pools. Um, when you look at the Vancouver aquatic strategy, there is a dearth of community amenities in South Vancouver. And your only options are to go east to Kensington to a, a dated, uh, pool, all the way to, over to Killarney, or down to Hillcrest, which is already oversubscribed. So I am really hearing and feeling the speakers that are talking about that. I think what this illustrates for me is that we have collectively in the city of Vancouver, um, a huge dearth in community amenities and projects are becoming more expensive to deliver and our infrastructure is aging and people need community amenities in their neighborhoods. If there's any takeaway for me in this project, it is that we're gonna have to do things differently, uh, to figure out outside of the city, just delivering things through our established model on our own. It might be a combination of public-private partnerships. There might be other ways to get there to deliver some of these benefits here. I will note that, um, the Marple Community Centre, which is under construction now, around Oakham 49th, the oldest in the city that was built in 1949, that community centre will be slated for completion 2026. It doesn't include a pool initially, but it did move to include provision, uh, for an outdoor pool, which what the neighborhood wanted, but we still need additional indoor pools and we still have a shortage in the city. Um, and that's gonna take a while for that to be funded and come to fruition. So, um, I'm hearing, uh, from the community here. What we have to do is look on balance of the fact that this project does deliver a significant amount of housing and in a transit-oriented area. Um, there is value to the childcare. There is value to the 88 social housing units, the 308 secured rental units, um, and a refreshed and renewed community centre facility. I was checking the prices because it used to be that there was more of a delta between the cost to have a subscription or a family membership monthly to go to the Y versus our community centres. And I think that, um, somebody buys a flexi pass or a fitness pass, I think that has lessened. Um, but it still remains expensive to deliver the services. So, um, I, I think that's the takeaway for this council more broadly. We have to judge this specific application, um, on its merits and within policy. And as we said, it is in a transit-focused area. It is gonna deliver a significant amount of housing. It is a, great to see the, uh, Musquiam on board with, um, the Capital Corporation partnership and that work. And this, uh, is a facility that's long overdue for renewal. I'm very familiar with this. I walk the Langara Trail often, um, and walk by it. Um, and it has been a bit tired and a little bit, a little bit old, but I, I just want to recognize the folks that have provided that feedback and say that there are other avenues for council to address, um, the need for amenities and that's something that councillors can take away. And so I think our job tonight is to sort of judge this specific application within the policies under which they have applied, um, and within the community benefits that they do provide. So I will be supporting it for that reason, but I appreciate all the comments from the speakers and I also share sadness at the loss of the pool. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Claussen.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Chair, and thank you, uh, staff and applicant for the presentation here. Um, I, um, it's funny how this has become a week where we're having a lot of discussions around pools and, and public infrastructure like that. Um, I, you know, unfortunately, there's a sorry history of us losing these facilities. I think of one that would have been, uh, just east of here at the Sunset, um, uh, Community Centre Pool, uh, that was, uh, uh, taken away probably 20 years ago. Same kind of timeframe, the Mount Pleasant, uh, uh, Park Outside Pool. Um, uh, no efforts that we've built, uh, Hillcrest, but we haven't had a chance to, uh, really expand very much since that time. And certainly, South Vancouver is not terribly well represented by these kinds of community amenities. So like councillor Kirby Young, I do think that we need to, um, give some serious consideration to these, i- i- if, uh, these really what are considered to be, uh, public priorities. Um, in terms of this project itself, I think the, the merits are, I think are well laid out. Um, first of all, the reconciliation piece i- is, for me, important to acknowledge. It's an important priority of the city and of this council. And this goes a long way, um, to really represent, um, uh, that, that quest, that goal by council and also, um, uh, honor the, the work that we're doing together with, uh, with the Musquiam people. Um, I also think that the, um, social housing components of this one are not to be dismissed in any way. This is, uh, a neighborhood that has, uh, a mix of incomes across the street. Um, I did a quick B.C. assessment check, uh, um, uh, not surprising to me, but, you know, home values and, uh, $3 million plus, uh, but also mixed with the student population. I was a one-time Langara student. And I actually, um, uh, even though I was in the Burnaby, I used to, I spend my summers at Burnaby Family YMCA. So I have, uh, a strong feeling about the importance of these bodies and, and, and of the neighborhood. And I think that we really need to kind of work together with our non-for, nonprofits and other organizations to try and meet the needs of, uh, the loss of these amenities as our city is growing. Uh, but we are in a, a transit-oriented area. That is really laid out clearly in this one. This is a priority that's being, um, uh, really pressed on us by the provincial government as well. Canada Line was built, um, with, uh, and, and with a really not a, a, a strong plan for density. And now, uh, this station will be, uh, uh, put to good use by the people and the residents, uh, of this development, uh, when it's completed. So, uh, I'm gonna be pleased to support it, but I do want to acknowledge what we're hearing from the neighborhood, uh, that this is, um, going to, uh, uh, certainly it's gonna bring, um, some opportunities for the community centre or recreation space. Um, uh, but at the same time, it's also gonna be, uh, creating a lot of homes and a lot of affordable homes as well, uh, in a transit-oriented neighborhood. So, uh, with that, I will, uh, be again, uh, supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Meisner.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And, uh, I echo a lot of the, uh, comments that my colleagues said so far, uh, around the proposal. Um, it does achieve laudable reconciliation goals and adds housing to a site, uh, where there isn't currently housing, um, in it, in a transit-oriented area. And that's, that's fantastic. And it's a significant number of units. Um, and it's also compliant, um, with the plan of Canby Corridor and what we're trying to achieve there. Um, on the other hand, um, it is hard for me, um, to square, um, the loss of the pool, um, and the impact that's gonna have on the community. Um, this has been in place, uh, this pool, this gym, since 1978, um, 47 years. And as highlighted by my colleagues, we have, uh, a severe lack of aquatic facilities in this area of the city in South Vancouver. And the ones that we have, um, are at capacity. Um, and I understand that it's not necessarily the YMCA's role to provide those services for the residents of Vancouver. Um, but I am saddened that, uh, a partnership couldn't have been hammered out, uh, in the last few years to retain, uh, this pool. Um, so with all that said, um, I'm, uh, going to be abstaining, uh, from this vote. Um, again, it's compliant with the policy and I support, uh, the goal of reconciliation, what Musquiam is trying to achieve and the additional housing units, but I just can't, um, accept, uh, the loss of the pool and the fitness facility for the members of this community. And I just don't feel like I have enough information, um, as to the history and as to why this couldn't have been achieved. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor. Thank you very much, Counselor. Counselor Joe?
Yeah, thanks Mayor. Also, thanks this workforce staff and also the applicant, also the speakers for speaking about this project at council tonight. I understand the concerns and the disappointment from the residents. You know, but I think there, as my colleague mentioned, there are other ways to support amenities in the neighbourhood. Just about 18 months ago, and this council passed a motion to support, bring more amenities in South Vancouver. It was unanimously supported by this council. So I'm pretty sure moving forward, there will be opportunity to bring other aquatic centre or other amenities to this neighbourhood and to South Vancouver in general. I think this project offer a lot of public benefits, a lot. 665 units, 88 social housing, also rental housing unit, as well as the 49 space childcare, which is really needed in this neighbourhood. While also the economic reconciliation, very important as well. And also, I want to say that this is, this project's in the neighbourhood with good catchment, with enrollment has been decreasing in some of the schools I know, which is also along with a motion passed in this council last year to increase density in those, catchment in those neighbourhoods. So for all those benefits, I think I'm gonna support this, this, this project with concern noted regarding the aquatic centre and amenity in this neighbourhood. But I think we're in a housing crisis, we need to endeavour to do everything we could to solve this housing crisis. So we thought I'm gonna support this project. Thanks Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Okay, so I'm now gonna call a vote, and so if we can please go to the voting panel? And please register your vote. Okay, and it looks like that passes with Counselor Meisner abstaining. Thank you very much. And so congratulations all the way. Do you want to take one minute? Can you hear us? Can you please come back? I'll find someone. Firm that? Great. All right, we'll just talk a lot faster. Okay, so the next item on the docket is item two, miscellaneous amendments, zoning and development bylaw and various other bylaws and land use documents. Now, before we begin the agenda item, if anyone believes that they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to say so. So seeing no hands up, I'm assuming we have no conflicts. So now the clerk's gonna read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw and various other bylaws and land use documents to achieve the intent of the bylaws and land use documents and improve administration. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Two pieces of correspondence in support, one piece of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 p.m. today.
Great, thank you. Now, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have our team from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application. Let's see. Please note that the city of Vancouver's General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability is the applicant for this item. So is there maybe a motion to waive? All right, any discussion? All in favour? Say aye. Great. All those opposed say nay. Great, so we will waive the presentation. Are there any questions from council to our team members on this item? Seeing none, this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We'll now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. So Clerk, do we have any registered speakers online or in person to provide comments on this item?
I'm just checking, Mayor, we do have a registered, excuse me, we do have one registered speaker. But they are not on the, not on the line right at the moment.
Okay, well, he'll have another, or that speaker will have another chance. Okay, this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. So we're now gonna take a five-minute recess and wait for any additional speakers who may come forward. Counselor Fry?
Counselor Fry, could you put it there? You are.
Awesome, thank you very much. Okay, Clerk, do we have any additional speakers online or in person to provide comments?
I am double-checking again, I don't want to.
No, we had quorum.
There was one speaker registered, but as far as I can tell, they're not in the audience, and they're not on the line. Operator, do we have anybody on the line?
No one online.
Great, thank you very much. Seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are few or no public comments received after 5:00 p.m., I'm now closing the receipt of public comments. Do our team members have any closing comments? Nope, great, thank you. Does council have any final questions for our team members? Seeing no one in the queue, Clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of the public comments?
No.
Okay, so council will now make its decision on the application. Do we have a mover for the recommendations? Thank you, Counselor Joe, seconded by Counselor Claussen. Council, is there any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue, I'm now gonna call a vote. Can we please go to the voting panel? Great, and that passes unanimously. Great, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in. Thanks for all your hard work. Okay, the next item on the docket is item number three, rezoning 767 through 791 West 28th Avenue. Before we begin the agenda item, does anybody wish to declare a conflict of interest? Seeing, oops, make sure, seeing no one, great.
Move to waive the presentation.
Okay, but first, before we do that, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Forum Development to rezone 767-791 West 28th Avenue from R1-1 Residential Inclusive District to RM-8A Multiple Dwelling District to permit a townhouse development with a maximum four-space ratio of 1.2. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. No correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing.
Great, thank you very much. Now, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to, to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have our team members from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application. This item has no speakers registered, so council could opt to waive the presentation if they so choose. And Counselor Kirby Young, I believe.
Move, move to waive?
Great, do we have a seconder? Counselor Montague, any discussion? No, great. All in favour? Say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay? Great, we will waive the presentation. Would the applicant team like to present the application if in attendance? Nope, great. Are there any questions from council to our team members or the applicant team noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? Um, so we're going to take a five minute recess and wait for any additional speakers.
Just checking. Message coming through, I'm not seeing any in person and no speakers online.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are few or no public comments received after five P M, I'm now closing the receipt of public comments. Uh, does the applicant team have any closing comments? Nope, great, thank you. Uh, do our team members have any uh closing comments? Thank you very much. Um, does council have uh any final questions for our team members? And seeing no one in the queue, um clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of public comments?
No.
Great, thank you very much. Um, great, well, council's now going to make a decision on this application. Uh do we have a mover for the recommendations? Councillor Joe, thank you very much, seconded by councillor Classon. Um, council members, is there any discussion? Seeing no one in the queue, um, I'm now going to call the vote. If we can please go to the voting panel and register your vote. Great, and that passes unanimously. Right, great, thank you very much. Okay, uh next item uh on the docket is uh item number four, request to speak. Uh, item number four, uh rezoning of eighty three sixty six through eighty three eighty Beatrice Street. Um, before we start, does any member uh believe they have a conflict of interest on this item? Nope. Oh, you're on the queue? Yes.
Uh, uh, mayor, since there are no um speakers on this item, I'm wondering if I, I can move to uh wave the, a presentation, staff presentation?
Sure, um, I'm first going to ask uh the clerk to read the application and the summary of correspondence received, and then we'll uh, we'll get there shortly, but thank you. Right, so uh clerk, uh can we please uh um, read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application by Stuart Howard Architects to rezone eighty three sixty six to eighty three eighty Beatrice Street from R one dash one residential inclusive district to R R dash two A residential rental district to permit the development of a four-story residential rental building with a partial story for rooftop amenity space. A floor space ratio of one point seven five is proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. One piece of correspondence in support and one piece of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to five P M today.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council? Please call toll free at one eight three 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 five three eighty six ten, followed by participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. Now, um, there will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the speaker, registered speakers list. Now, we do have um our team members uh here to uh present, um, um, but uh I know councillor Classon um wanted to uh move a motion to waive uh the presentation. Great, councillor Montague has seconded, uh, any discussion? All in favor of waiving, say aye, aye. All the polls say nay? Great, so we will waive the presentation. Um, would the applicant team uh like to present the application if in attendance?
Uh, thank you, your worship, just to say the applicant team is here. If council would, would like to ask any questions about the development permit that we'll be coming in with later on.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions for uh from council to our team members or the applicant team noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? Councillor Classon, um, nope, very good, okay, great, thank you. Um, seeing none, uh, this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll free at, uh, free at uh one eight three 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 five three eighty six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X made available on the live stream. Uh, we're now going to hear from the public. Uh, any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Uh clerk, um, I believe we do have one registered speaker, is that, I just want to, um.
Nina.
Yep, Nina Halliday Thompson. Um, great, uh, is Nina, oh, perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, uh, I would first say I'm a senior, and I rent in the area of, uh, on Island Avenue, which is just a position to Beatrice. And uh, it's about two blocks away from the riverfront, which is well-developed. And uh, it's full of a lot of really, really old buildings, and I see a lot of for sale signs going up now in the area. Um, so I think it's great that it's going to be a, a, I, I support the fact that it's being rezoned to be uh for renters. And um, just down from that property is a community garden, which I think will be a great amenity for the project. And uh, so one of my questions is the rental based on income. And especially with uh seniors on a fixed income, that's, it's been a challenge for finding decently priced rental. In fact, I'm living in a house of quite a few people that are sharing the rent, rental cost right now. Which is, which is okay, it's a shared accommodation, but that's the, all I could find for myself at this time. And uh, so uh, security, I'm curious, it would be the first kind of, uh, I think you said it's a four-story building. So in the area, what is going to be the security for that area? And um, because there is, there's a street called Kent Street, which runs parallel to uh Marine Drive. And uh, it's, it's, it's accessible from driving for where I go and, and so forth. But I guess um Beatrice Street itself needs to be properly paved, it's really, really bumpy and, and really a mess. And um so road repairs, I'm curious about that. And uh, again, with uh, even with this, listening to the uh Y M C A, uh, we don't, we're in, this is still South Vancouver area. And the nicest uh place to go for swimming and everything else is in Richmond, actually, over the Knight Street Bridge. So that's accessible for me in the sense that it's only about a twenty-minute drive. Um. What else can I say? Um, I'm excited that, in fact, there's going to be a development like this in the area. And it's not a high-rise, so that's pretty cool. Um, but I don't know, is it a concrete uh development or is it wood? Um. Because I know concrete will last longer than wood. And um yeah, this is the first time ever I've spoken publicly about something. So uh, I wish you great success in this development, and uh I'll look forward to seeing it being developed. So I wish you great success in this development and I'll look forward to seeing it being developed.
Thank you very much. So clerk, do you have any other people online or in the chamber?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. This is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at one three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. We're going to now take another five-minute recess and wait for any additional speakers.
Counselor Schreie, we're just getting reconvened. Thank you.
Online or in person?
Uh, no speaker online for, okay, um, no, we're, we're just sorting out between four and five, but there's none for four.
Okay, great. Okay, seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are fewer no public comments received after 5pm, I'm now going to close the receipt of public comments. Does the applicant team have any closing comments?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just in response to the speaker, she did have a couple of questions about the sort of rental tenure that this project's going to have. We are in the process of doing the development permit drawing, so I can answer some of her questions, I believe. They will be secured market rental units, so no below market, but all market rentals. So it's whatever the market will bear for that neighborhood. We anticipate there being about forty total units in this project. Four of which would be three-bedroom townhouses, ten of which would be two-bedroom units, and twenty-six of which would be either one-bedroom or bachelor units. The speaker had a question about the type of construction. Unfortunately, concrete construction does not really pencil for buildings of this scale, so it would be wood frame construction for this building. And she also had questions about public amenity upgrades. Typically, engineering requires us to improve the public realm directly in front of our property. So we would have to do sidewalks, crossings and that sort of thing. Sometimes the center line of road and probably the laneways on the south and the east as well.
Great, thank you very, very thorough. Do our team members have any closing comments?
No comments from staff.
Thank you very much. Does council have any final questions for our team members? And Counselor Klassen, was that Legacy?
I think that was Legacy, yeah.
Okay, great, thanks, sorry. Okay, in one sec, sorry. Clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of the public comments?
No.
Great, so Counselor Kirby Young would like to move the recommendation as their secondary. Counselor Joe, thank you very much. Council, is there any discussion? Counselor Klassen? Is that right, or is that, what's, there's gremlins in the machine there. Okay, I'm going to advance, we're good. Seeing no one in the queue, why don't we take this to a vote? Great, and it passes unanimously. Great, congrats. And thank you, team. Okay, the next item is item number five. CD dash one rezoning forty-five forty-five through forty-five seventy-five West Tenth Avenue. Now, before we begin this agenda item, does anybody wish to declare a potential conflict of interest? Seeing no one declaring one, the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by Bentall Green Oak Canada LP to rezone forty-five forty-five dash forty-five seventy-five West Tenth Avenue from CD dash, or C dash two Commercial District to CD dash one Comprehensive Development District to permit a mixed-use development with two towers, nineteen and twenty-one stories, and two six-story residential buildings containing five hundred and seventy-one rental units with twenty percent of the residential floor area for below-market rental units and a commercial space on the ground floor, including a grocery store. A floor space ratio of three point nine two and a height of sixty-eight point three meters, or two hundred and twenty-four feet, with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval, subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to the public hearing. Three hundred and ninety-six pieces of correspondence in support, ninety-nine pieces of correspondence in opposition, and thirteen pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5pm today.
Great, thank you very much. Now, this is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at one eight three 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 five three eighty-six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers and missed speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. Now, we do have our team members from planning, urban design and sustainability here to present the application.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Erdman, rezoning planner for this application, being considered under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program. The site shown in red is located on the north side of West Tenth Avenue, spanning nearly a full block between Tolney and Sassamate Streets. It is located at the western end of the Point Gray Village retail area and has been a vacant site since 2019 when the previous Safeway Grocery Store was demolished. The surrounding area includes low-rise commercial and mixed-use buildings along Tenth Avenue, a seven-story mixed-use strata building at the southwest corner, apartment towers to the west, and detached housing to the north. Various amenities and services are in close proximity to the site, including transit, bike routes, parks, shopping and community facilities. This application is being considered under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Program, or MERP for short. This program is intended to deliver both market and below-market rental housing across the city in new private developments. Under this program, twenty percent of the residential floor area is required to be secured at below-market rates, at a twenty percent discount to citywide average rents, as determined by the CMHC. This affordability is secured by a housing agreement and Section two nineteen covenant for sixty years or the life of the building. For large sites such as this one, under the MERP policy, height and density will vary depending on the site and context, subject to urban design performance. This application is for a mixed-use development with a nineteen-story and a twenty-one-story tower atop a shared podium and two six-story buildings at the northeast and northwest corners of the site. A new grocery store and commercial spaces are proposed for the ground floor. The project includes five hundred and seventy-one rental units in total, with four hundred and fifty-seven market units and a hundred and fourteen below-market rental units to meet the twenty percent below-market requirement. A maximum height of two hundred and twenty-four feet for the tallest building and overall FSR of three point nine two is proposed. Two levels of underground parking are included, and a sixty-two-hundred-square-foot public plaza is proposed for the southwest corner of the site. This table shows starting rents as well as the average annual household incomes they serve. Starting rents for the below-market units are to be discounted at twenty percent below citywide average market rents. Based on recent data, rents for the below-market units would range from about twelve hundred for a studio unit to twenty-four hundred for a three-bedroom unit. In comparison, average starting rents for market units on the west side of Vancouver would range from nineteen hundred for a studio to forty-four hundred for a three-bedroom unit. Prior to application submission, four public information sessions were held in 2022 and 2023 to seek early input on preliminary proposals. Following application submission, a virtual Q and A period was held from January twenty-second to February eleventh of last year, in addition to an in-person information session on February eighth. Over two hundred and thirty people attended the in-person event, while a hundred and twenty-nine questions were submitted online. In total, over seven hundred pieces of correspondence were received during the application review process. Comments of support were expressed for the new housing, including the below-market rental units, the return of a grocery store and new commercial spaces, and that the additional residents would support local businesses, helping to revitalize the retail village. However, the public also expressed concerns about the proposal's height and scale being too large for the site, potential traffic and parking impacts. Some people felt the building design was unattractive, the streetscape inadequate, and the plaza too small and in the wrong location. In addition, there were concerns noted over the lack of additional public amenities, such as a childcare facility or library. In response to preliminary staff analysis and feedback received from UDP and the public, a revised proposal was submitted, which addressed several of the concerns noted. The original proposal is shown on the left and the revised proposal on the right. The taller towers were pushed further north and the podium height reduced from six to four stories to create a greater sense of openness for pedestrians along the shopping street. The streetscape was also improved with wider sidewalks along Tenth Avenue, a wider opening and slight increase in size of the plaza, and additional ground floor commercial space added along Tenth Avenue. In addition, a second entrance to the underground parking was added to better disperse vehicle flow to and from the site. Staff note that architectural expression will be improved at the development permit stage and that an updated TAMS and transportation demand management plan will be required to demonstrate how traffic demand can be reduced and parking needs met safely onsite. Engineering conditions also note several onsite and offsite improvements to be included, such as speed bumps, improved street lighting and traffic signal upgrades at the two adjacent intersections. The public benefits accruing from this application includes five hundred and seventy-one new secured rental units, including a hundred and fourteen below-market rental units, to meet the twenty percent requirement of the MERP program. The applicant is seeking a DCL waiver for the residential floor area. However, over eight million in DCLs will still be collected, in addition to a public art contribution of one million. Staff and real estate services have reviewed the financial performance of the project and have determined that the requirement to provide twenty percent below-market rental housing units offsets any land lift. Thus, the project is not able to provide any additional public amenities beyond the a hundred and fourteen below-market rental housing units. In conclusion, the proposal meets the intent of the MERP program and advances the city's rental housing targets by delivering five hundred and seventy-one rental units with twenty percent of the floor area as below-market units. Staff recommend approval, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Would the applicant team like to present the application if in attendance?
Thank you, Scott. And thank you, councilors and Mayor Sim, for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Dave Roche. I'm here representing the applicant, BGO. I also have here with me a few members of our project team who are on hand and available to answer questions as needed. One of them is just behind me here, Mark Whitehead, our project architect from MCM Architects, as well as Virginia Byrd, over to my left, our community outreach and engagement consultant. Online, we have a few of our team members, Stephen and Ray Hannah from DKL Landscape Architects, Yulia from Bund Transportation, and Kevin from Introba Sustainability Consultants. So please let us know if there's questions they can help you with. As I mentioned, I am representing the applicant, BGO. If I could, I'd just like to quickly address some of the characterization about BGO that we've seen in recent opinion pages in local media and from some members of the community, where they refer to BGO as a U.S.-based real estate company. This characterization is not accurate. Personally, I've been employed by BGO here in Vancouver for 15 years, but BGO's story in Vancouver goes back much, much further than that. The "B" in BGO stands for Bentall. That company was founded by Charles Bentall right here in Vancouver in 1911. What that means is that BGO has been continuously and responsibly developing, managing, and owning real estate here in Vancouver for 114 years. Today, BGO is owned by Sun Life Financial, which is a large financial services company that is headquartered in Toronto. In my opinion, BGO is truly an example of a Vancouver-born success story. We now do have offices not only across Canada, but also in Europe, Asia, and the U.S. We've grown to be almost 1,500 employees across the globe, but over 1,200 of those employees are based here in Canada and 200 of those here in Vancouver. So now that that's out of the way, I'll speak to you about the site we're here to have heard today. That's 4545 West 10th Avenue. Sun Life has owned the site for more than 50 years and has been an excellent neighbor to the Point Gray community during that period. They've been here for decades and they'll be here for decades. This large site, and it's approximately three acres in size, has been entirely vacant since 2018, after the Safeway Grocery Store on the site made the decision to shut down due to the age, size, and layout of the existing building. For over six years now, BGO has been continuously and diligently advancing efforts to rezone and develop this vacant site. Many design approaches have been shared with the community and the city. The current design, in fact, substantially adopts the design approach suggested by the city and city staff in our various meetings with them. During this six-year period where this large site is sat vacant and unused, Vancouver has experienced an extreme housing shortage, especially rental housing and affordable housing. And also during this period, the neighborhood retail on West 10th has struggled to survive without a grocery store at its heart. Storefront retail vacancy levels along West 10th have risen to between 20% to 30%, which is amongst the highest retail vacancy level observed in any of Vancouver's neighborhoods currently. Community engagement by our team over the past six years was mentioned by the planner a minute ago, but it's been extensive. Several rounds of mail-out correspondence to the neighborhood. We launched a West 10th specific project website to solicit feedback from the community. We've held five public open houses. Two of those were virtual, three of them in-person opportunities. And we've had many meetings with community groups. And finally, in terms of engagement, I want to make sure I mention this one because it was a really rewarding effort we undertook. But BGO funded and organized the grade-seven students from nearby Queen Elizabeth School to create murals, which were then transposed onto the temporary site hoarding along West 10th, and the grade-seven students got a real kick out of it. We enjoyed it as well. Councilors and Mayor Sim, we have been attempting to deliver this proposed redevelopment on this large vacant site for six years. What's important to remember here is that no people or businesses need to be displaced or moved to allow development to continue, or to begin, I should say. The mix of market and below-market rental homes, together with the supporting grocery store and the small-scale retail units, is exactly what we feel this community needs. We encourage you to approve this rezoning proposal without further delay. Thank you for your consideration and your time. I'll now ask Mark Whitehead to come up and speak on our behalf.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Whitehead. I am both the architect for this project and a resident of Point Gray for 40 years. My wife and I were married at the local church, one of the local churches, and raised three children in this neighborhood. They all went to local schools like Queen Mary, OLPH, Lord Bingham, frequented the library. They at various times sat in a shopping cart while we shopped at Safeway on 10th, hoping that Sandy the baker would give them a donut. In that time, my wife and I both shopped for clothes on West 10th at various fashion stores. There was even a children's clothing store. We went to the Varsity Theater, bowled at Varsity Lanes, frequented the many coffee shops and restaurants. I still get my hair cut at Cheers. I participated in the community for some time, running the Point Gray Fiesta Parade, yes, that's what it's called, for 10 years, which went down 10th Avenue to Trimble Park, the weekend school let out for summer. I can say that now 10th Avenue is a shadow of its former self. Very few of the stores that were there are there now. Its problems are many, to do with complex issues like parking and taxes, et cetera. And I can't say that I have the solutions, but I know as an architect and a resident that those solutions start with this project, which will bring back the food store in a comparable size, add retail and density, and an injection of many new residents. We'll also create a plaza at the western culmination of 10th Avenue as an anchor for the retail there as one progresses from east to west, with permeable neighborhood connections to north and west. It will be animated with retail and integrate with the seven-story tower and its retail to the west. It will be the largest plaza on the west side at more than 6,000 square feet, which is more than twice the size of the well-known plaza at Whole Foods on 4th Avenue. And when combined with the muse to the north and west, will equate to more than 10,000 square feet of public space. We have listened to the public input over the time it has taken to develop this project, like increasing sidewalk width to an average of 22.5 feet, more than Stong's and London Drugs on Dunbar, more than our project, MCM's project at Fort and Vine, with a public realm response to match. Like lowering the podium scale on West 10th, reducing the tower exposure to the seven-story building to the west, moving both towers back off West 10th by 32 feet, increased car access to the site to reduce congestion by establishing a discreet residential access from Tolney and a commercial retail access from Sassamate. To reiterate, we have met and responded to both city staff and the public over six years and have arrived here with a project that bodes well for the future of 10th Avenue and help return it to its former high-street status. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any questions from council to our team members or the applicant team, noting that this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? And I do not... Oh, Counselor Meisner?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I noted the mention of the traffic signal upgrades. I don't know if this may be a question for city staff, but I'm wondering about consideration of the mid-block crosswalk, if that's something that was explored. We've heard a lot of feedback from the community about their desire for a mid-block crosswalk across this development.
Thank you for the question, Counselor Meisner. I'll now refer to my colleagues Rosemary and Paul in engineering, who can respond to that in greater detail.
Great.
Hi, good evening. Rosemary Jaskovic, Senior Technical Manager for Development Transportation Planning and Engineering Services. So as part of this Safeway Development application, we have conditioned other signal upgrades adjacent to the site, so the existing PED crossings at Sassamate and 10th and Tolney at 10th to full signals. Those would support the pedestrian crossings on the minor streets as well as the vehicles exiting and entering 10th. When it comes to a mid-block crossing for this site, this wasn't an item that was identified in the developer's traffic study as a need triggered by the site, nor in kind of our recent studies of the corridor in the area. And to include that as part of this development would be a challenge for the development economics. It wasn't included as a condition.
Okay, a challenge for the development economics because is that cost quite substantial of a mid-block crosswalk?
Yeah, I guess traffic signals generally can cost anywhere from $500,000 upwards to $1 million, depending on the type of signal that it is. Separate to this signal, I'll also note there's a number, quite a number of other transportation improvements that are being conditioned on the site. So it's finding that balance of, you know, what would provide really meaningful benefit in terms of transportation improvements, as well as balancing that, you know, what makes it work for the development side economic?
Okay, and then you mentioned the signal upgrades at those two intersections, I guess, on either side of the site. But aren't there already signals there?
The signals that are currently there are pedestrian, what we would call like pedestrian signals. So they're the half signals, the flashing green bulbs. So those are being upgraded to the full four-way signal. So that provides additional benefit for pedestrians in all directions, as well as for additional vehicle movement.
Okay, understand, okay. So like a proper four-way signal intersection as opposed to just the flashing green light and no signals on... Is it Tolney? Is that one of the streets?
Correct, so Tolney would be upgraded to a full signal as would Sassamate.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And then my other question was around, and it was touched on in the presentation. This is for the applicant around the setback. Can you talk about how you increased that setback from the street? How much? I'm talking about the setback of the building.
The original location of the towers was within five feet of the property line. It's now 32 feet.
Okay, so that's...
Moved to the north.
Pretty substantial difference.
It is, yes.
Okay, okay, great. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Kirby Young.
Yeah, thanks. I have a couple of questions. And first, can we talk about the public plaza? And this might be a question best directed to the applicant because I know there's been a lot of dialogue and characterization from hopes in the community from the beginning to one iteration of the plan to what you mentioned now in terms of setback and more space. So can we, can you just walk us through sort of explicitly, what is the size of the public plaza? What does it look like? What kind of activities does it lend itself to there? What is it now? And has it changed from what was in the original proposal?
It has gotten slightly larger, 6,260 feet.
6,260?
Square feet. The seven-story building to the west is splayed slightly. So this reciprocates that. So it's much wider at the property line and narrow as it proceeds north. And as it proceeds north, it turns into a muse. It is animated on both sides by townhouses or city homes. And then there's a spur to the west. So it connects to both 9th and to Tolney, as well as 10th. And it is at the west end of the project because it does act like an anchor that when people progress up 10th and have done their retail or shopping, there is a plaza there for them. Locating it in the middle of the development would be counterproductive as it would mean that the food store could not be located there. It would disrupt the floor plate that replaces what is there currently.
Okay, and is it envisioned to have seating?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Planters? What does it look like?
Well, it'll be a landscape plaza with seating, trees. There are some trees that will be on native soil, not on parking garage. It has retail, 2,000 square feet on the east side. There are three retailers on the west side.
Okay, thank you for that. I have, and then the setback was increased from what to what on the sidewalk? And does that allow for a lighter, wider sidewalk? Does that allow for sort of some bistro chairs, depending on the retailers that are there?
Well, the sidewalk widths vary between 19.5 and 27 feet. The average is 22.5 feet. In the city of Vancouver, the engineering department frequently requests 5.5 meters from the back of curb, which is 18 feet. So this exceeds that standard. It also exceeds... I mean, I can go into other developments around the city. This is a substantial sidewalk. I should also say that its movement in and out helps to identify residential lobbies versus the food store versus retail.
Okay, so depending...
There's a lot of animation.
So more space for people set back from cars, more space to walk in, potentially, depending on the retailers. There could be some bistro chairs outside, et cetera. Okay, this question could be for the applicant. It could be for staff, whoever may have the information. What is currently the retail vacancy rate in West Point Gray Village?
We haven't surveyed it scientifically. We did a walking survey and the number was in the mid-20% vacancy. That was about eight months ago. So that's been our observation, and that certainly...
I heard it as a city moderator. So number ending on 16...
We have gremlins.
All right, you were saying that the vacancy...
That would put it right up amongst the highest vacancy levels of any retail strip in Vancouver.
One of the highest of any retail areas...
In our opinion, yeah.
In the city, okay. And I see the applicant might want to add something to that. Are you approaching to add? Did you want to...
No, I'm just here in case you want to ask questions, sorry.
Okay, that is helpful. I will leave the questions there. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Counselor Frye?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I guess, question for the applicant. It took six, what took six years? How is this project that... I mean, I appreciate it's a large site, but is that typical or is that longer than most?
Counselor Frye, I think you'd like to shut these meetings down by about 10 o'clock. So I'm not sure I can give you a full answer, but it's been a long road. I would say that there was quite a bit of design back and forth. We've received... We've had three separate, full-scale rounds of design on this project. In each case, we've tried to listen to the feedback we've got from the community, certainly as well as the city and eventually the urban design panel. So we've submitted three different proposals in terms of design. Some of them doubled back to the original one. And there's been a lot of engagement as well. COVID happened in there, which was a small portion of the time that went by. But I would say it's a large number of things and we're just relieved to finally be here today after six years of looking at a vacant site.
Okay, appreciate that. Question for, I guess, the applicant and for staff. My understanding is on the sustainable large development policy, typically below-market is 30%. And can somebody explain how this is coming in at 20 with the MERP versus the standard below-market... or sorry, the standard sustainable large development policy?
Thank you for the question, counselor. I'll refer to my colleagues in housing in just a moment. But just want to reiterate that the rezoning enabling policy for this proposal is the MERP program, which does require that 20% is the minimum for below-market rental floor area. And I'll pass it to housing in case they have anything else to add.
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Annie Mobles with Housing Policy and Regulation. Yeah, just reiterating what Scott said. The enabling policy here is the MERP pilot. But maybe just additional clarification for the large sites policy. What we typically see are strata developments where there's a 20% social housing turnkey to the city as well as a 10% rental with below-market rental. So really a different kind of policy construct than what's considered here. So it is meeting the policy requirement for the MERP pilot now called below-market rental housing policy.
Okay, you can understand why I might be confused because there's lots of reference to the sustainable large site policy in this document, yet it's not consistent with... And I think perhaps, you know, as we move forward with these kind of... I mean, obviously, we don't have that many large sites. It does seem a bit confusing and... It does seem a bit confusing and especially knowing that MERP is no longer the policy that it was either. But I appreciate this has been six years in the making, so, okay. I see a lot of people on the queue. I'll let it go with that. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Joe?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So I think that's the question for the applicant. So I think one of the concerns I heard from the residents is a lack of parking space. 444 parking but with 571 units. So what is our mitigation strategy in terms of the lack of parking space?
Yeah, so we hire a transportation consultant who's also on the line here today for more technical questions. But I can tell you that it's in our best interest to properly serve the development with parking, both for our commercial tenants and our rental tenants. We base those numbers on the input from our consultant, but also on what we see on the existing properties we manage around Vancouver and other jurisdictions in Canada. So it's a ratio we're comfortable with, both on the commercial side and the rental side. And it's backed up by the, you know, guidance from the consultant that we've retained here as well. And I think you'd find it's very similar, if not these days, a more generous parking ratio than you see in many developments.
Yes, thanks. Is the transportation consultant here to speak about this?
Julia, would you like to add to that?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, Julia Lim from Partners Associates Transportation Consultant. Yes, we have done studies. We did collect some data, also the vehicle ownerships for the rental buildings in the Vancouver area. And the study that we got, the results that we got support the proposed parking ratio for the residential part of it. And the commercial portion of it also support what other developments that we've been working on. It's the same parking rate. We're confident with the parking rates that we propose.
Okay, thank you. Next question is for the city staff, I think. So if I understand correctly, so I think the population in this particular neighborhood has been decreasing in the past many years. Can you confirm that? Or you have that number?
Thank you for the question, councillor. I don't have that information on hand at the moment, but staff can look into that and follow up with you after.
Okay, thank you. Next question is also for staff. So I think in your presentation, also we heard from the residents as well, lack of amenity in this area, especially for the lack of a public library. So I was so confused. Is there just a library just across 10th Avenue?
Yes, the existing West Point Gray branch of the Vancouver Public Library is currently across the street.
Okay, and that library is not moving anywhere, just stay there, right?
It's at a relatively new home and a temporary lease. But I actually, I have my colleague from VPL, Erin Mashdown, on the line and she can speak more to details on the future of the library.
That'd be great.
Thanks very much. This is Marin Ashdown, Director of Neighborhood and Use Services for the Vancouver Public Library. We do indeed have a library right across the street. It is a new leased space that was renovated and moved into last year. And we have a 10-year lease on that site. So we have quite a long time remaining on that location and are really happy to remain an anchor in this neighborhood. It's a very busy, vibrant space, but it's serving the community quite well at this time.
Thank you. That's all my question. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Claussen.
Thank you. So an overarching discussion around this particular site and project has to do with the, sort of, the state of the commercial high-street area. And this was, in many ways, intended to be a bit of a panacea or partly a way to try and help that. So I'm a little curious. There's a bit of a dearth of information around the commercial space in the presentation. I heard mention of increasing the number of storefront potentially along the street there. Do we know, I realize that some of the spaces in there can be updated for, depending on what commercial tenants are going to be there. But is there enough space in here for a grocery store? It's not clear to me from this one. And are we looking, what kind of potential street-level commercial tenants are we expecting here given the shape of the building? And will, and the second question that you might be able to add, will there be any parking spaces available for people who are shopping or something coming to the area?
Certainly. Thank you for the questions. I'll just answer the last one first. Yes, there's parking set aside for commercial tenants and visitors to the project and people who live in the project. Getting back to your other questions, yes, the intention is to accommodate a large grocery store in the heart of the development. And that is, we feel critical to bring back the retail activity levels in this neighborhood. In addition to that large grocery store, which is certainly going to be accommodated, we have four separate smaller commercial retail unit spaces. They are clustered on one end, which is the western end, around that plaza that we described earlier. It's likely that those ones around that plaza, those two units could be demised into three, but those two would likely be food service type retailers. We, it's certainly too early to have made commitments at this time. And then the other smaller retail units are on the eastern end of West 10th of our site beside the grocery store. We do not yet know what uses those will be, certainly be market-driven. We're open to any interest there.
And by food services, are you referring to restaurants?
Correct.
Okay, because I, I'm old enough to remember when the original Earls in Vancouver opened.
Yeah.
On West 10th.
Me too, actually.
Remember, and what became the Cactus Club, I believe, after that. So it was a great place to go dine in that area. And the question was asked earlier about the commercial vacancy. It was around 17%, but it wouldn't surprise me if it's a little bit higher right now. So definitely this is hopefully going to be a magnet for that. So that's my question, really focusing on that particular part of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dominado.
Thanks, and thanks for being here this evening. Yeah, question to the applicant. You noted how long this has been, this process, a lot of community engagement. But I do know through some of that engagement, there was interest in seeing more than a grocery store and commercial retail at ground level. There was conversations about the public library across the street. There was conversations about childcare. Could you just speak to sort of, sort of how you landed where you are? The economics of it, the contributions that are, there are conservative amenities here? Just because I, we engaged quite a bit, I think, with residents as well as councillors. And so can you just comment on that from your perspective?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So as we talked about and as staff introduced at the start of our presentation, this project is proceeding under the MERP program. The priority and, well, the requirement under that policy is to deliver rental housing and in particular, 20% of the homes as below-market rental housing. You saw those rental rates that the planner had up on the screen there. They are significantly reduced. That in itself has a material impact on the viability of the project and the pro forma. City staff and Scott Erdman mentioned this in his presentation, have reviewed our pro forma no less than three times during the six years we've been advancing this. Each time, without hesitation, they determined, as he said today, there was no room for additional community amenities. And that was the determination that led us to where we are today.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'll think I'll leave it there because my colleague asked about traffic and traffic management. So we'll leave it there for now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Kirby Young?
Yeah, very quick follow-up. I neglect to answer and councillor Joe touched on it. I'm just wondering if we can get that information back on the area population before the end of the hearing? Because it is, I'd like to know if my understanding is correct, that it is the one area in the city that's actually lost population?
Yeah, thank you for following up, councillor. One of my colleagues was able to do a quick bit of research. And according to census data, the population has seen slight fluctuations over the years, but it's been relatively stable and generally around 13,000 people.
Okay, so quite an anomaly compared to other areas of the city that have grown and this is not.
So that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, seeing no one else in the queue. This is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 1061445 pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We will now hear from the public. Any registered speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Let's see, and I believe we have a lot of speakers. The first speaker would be Russell Wong. Russell, please go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Russell Wong. I'm a volunteer with the Vancouver Area Neighbors Association. I live in Vancouver and I do not work in real estate or development. I'd like to speak in support of this application. We have this paradoxical situation where land in Vancouver is limited because of the ocean and the mountains, but at the same time, it's really underused. The reason is getting approval to build new housing is extremely slow and expensive. This lot is about 128,000 square feet or about 30 times the size of a standard lot. It's been sitting empty for the last six years. Next slide, please. This project will provide 570 new rental homes, including 115 below-market rentals in a neighborhood with high demand close to UBC, right on the 99 bus route. Because they're purpose-built rentals, they'll provide secure housing without your having to be rich enough to own. There's zero displacement. And this project will also include a new grocery store. I understand that opponents of this project are asking for it to pay more taxes to pay for childcare and a new library. Honestly, this is a good example of why housing here is so scarce and expensive. When we tax new housing like it's a gold mine, it raises the floor on prices and rents. I'd suggest that if we want more community amenities like childcare and libraries, we should pay for them through property taxes or perhaps income taxes, not by putting heavy taxes on the narrow tax base of new housing. When we tax something, we get less of it. Housing is a good thing. We want more of it, not less of it. Finally, I'd like to thank the people on the Vancouver Reddit who took the time to send in written comments to council. Whenever new housing is proposed, there's often vocal opposition from people who don't want their neighborhood to change, which is natural. But when council makes a decision, I think it's really important to also hear from people across the city. Because housing is so unbelievably scarce and expensive, there's many people who are struggling with high rents and precarious housing and who are frustrated with how slowly the city approves more housing. Because we don't have enough housing, prices and rents have to rise to unbearable levels to keep people out and to force people to give up and move away. It's terrible for younger people and renters, but it's a bad situation even for older homeowners because then we can't find people to fill jobs like nurses at our hospitals. Thank you.
Thank you, Russell. Speaker number two is Kenneth Hughes. Kenneth?
Have the next slide, please. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sim and councillors. My name is Ken Hughes. I'm the president of the STRATA council for Point Gray Place, the rather anonymous white block that you see there with PGP on it. It's not an empty warehouse. It's actually a place where a lot of people live. It's a seven-story STRATA building. It consists of about 29 residential units, four commercial units, including a major bank on 10th Avenue, a private children's music school and a specialty wine store. This building was built in 1995 and it sits, as you can see, on the very corner, the southwest corner of this entire rectangle, as it could have been, that the development is going to be situated on. I think I can speak with confidence that the, and characterize the population of our building, PGP, as being a series of young families with children, older folks, some of whom are moving out into homes, and students. And I believe from being the STRATA president for a number of years that I can safely say our building has a social, a strong sense of social responsibility. So our position is, one of those votes that came in when we were asked in our application whether we were for or against or otherwise other, that we do, I do, I think, speak on behalf of Point Gray Place as being in the other camp. And I need to qualify why that is. The position of our building is accepting of the need for more housing in Vancouver. I'm a resident in this city for a number of years. And of course, I've heard at council meetings like this that many new areas don't want more housing. They feel that it shouldn't be in their neighborhood. We do not fit that category and I want to emphasize that categorically. We want to work with this developer in a collaborative fashion. We understand that there's a need for bad, a bad need for low-income housing in what is really an expanding and exciting city. Also, this new development, whatever shape it takes, will bring back life to this deteriorating neighborhood. There's no question about that. We need to revitalize what's called West Point Gray. So our purpose in presenting this public hearing is just to quickly outline some of the ways that the development as it stands will affect our particular building. Because it certainly will. We've tried to engage with the developer many times over the years from the earliest iterations of this, of this proposal, open houses, et cetera. We've tried to be constructive in our feedback. And yet every time we've spoken up with a suggestion, it seems that buildings on the site that are being proposed have got bigger, taller and bulkier. We, as therefore, feel that our building, which is only seven floors, is going to be boxed in by this new development with narrow, almost ghetto-like spaces separating us and the walls of the new facilities dwarfing us with steel and glass and blanking out lights and a sense of open space. So here are a few examples that we would like to point out. Next slide, please. We request making the six-story buildings, especially on the north side of the complex, that's buildings one, two and three, to four stories as they once were. We request that the two towers be lower, they were lower at once, as, and staggered in their position to form more open space, sorry, for the residents of our building that face the eastern side of the building on PGP. Next slide, please. We request an increase in the size of the plaza. We request that the plaza increase in size to provide more opportunity or community interaction.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hughes, we're at time.
We hope that the council will consider some of these requests. We will have other speakers that will speak more specifically. And I want to thank you for listening to my presentation.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for coming in. The next speaker we have is speaker number three, Catherine McCauley. Catherine, are you on the line?
Yes, hello.
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak in support of this proposal. I think it goes without saying that we have a housing crisis across the country and in particular here in Vancouver. And I support wholeheartedly a project like this that will build much-needed market rental and moderate-income housing. And I think the developer has actually been very responsive to a lot of the things that have been brought to their attention by the citizens and incorporated them in the latest version of the plan. That's the first reason that I support it, is the need for this kind of density and housing in the city. The second reason that I'm in support of it is that I think this development will be the catalyst for revitalization in Point Gray. My family's lived three blocks from this site for 21 years. And I can tell you, when we first moved here, we could, much like the architect who spoke before me, head out our front door and around the corner and go to Point Gray Village. And there was bookstores, butchers, a movie theater, toy store, bakeries. It was a very vibrant and charming little village. And I'm sure all of us have been through it now and seen just how devastating and heartbreaking and gutted it has been in the last number of years. So I'm excited to see something like this proposed that will bring that revitalization back to what those of us who are neighbors and who live there and love Point Gray would like to see it returned to. So that's really all I want to say. I know you have a lot of speed. I know you have a lot of speakers, but I'm really excited to see this move forward, and I think, to be honest, that six years is a long time to wait to do the right thing. So hopefully, it will be approved, and now it will move quite quickly to completion. That's it for me. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number four is Fraser Blanchflower. Fraser, are you online?
Yep. Hi, good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to offer some brief comments in support of the project being considered. This project will generate new housing and retail in an area that has not seen much growth. And as everybody knows, the cost of housing in Vancouver is out of control, and supply is a key factor which this plan addresses. The five hundred and seventy-one new rental homes, including a number of moderate-income rentals, provide more supply and attainable housing for households earning an annual salary between thirty to eighty thousand, which will help to mitigate an outward migration of young professionals. And as the other speaker had said, this project has been delayed for too long, and it's time to move forward with it.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number five, oh, thank you. Speaker number five is Henry McQueen. Henry, are you on the line?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Henry McQueen. I'm a long-term resident of Vancouver, calling in to lend my emphatic support of the application. Apologies for your some snoring, I have a three-month-old strapped to my chest. As the person who spent a lot of time at the old Safeway, also sitting in a shopping cart, I've watched the neighbourhood I grew up in get hollowed out, one shop, one family, one young adult at a time. Someone who works in planning and development, I'm super encouraged by the applicant's response to the feedback they received, lowered podium heights, better streetscape, a focus on the retail experience, love the pathways and connections, feel larger than plaza. And of course, the housing piece. I'm a former UBC student athlete, current volunteer with the athletics programme at UBC, and a dad who hopes his kids will stay in Vancouver when they, when they grow up. And I just know how dire the housing options in this part of the city are, they just haven't kept up. So it's a beautiful part of town that more people should be able to experience, and students, working people, people aging in place, and our kids as they age too. I don't think we can overlook the quality of the applicants here and the architecture team. People with just as deeper roots as you'll ever see in this industry, and incredible strength to execute. They've both executed amazing projects many, many times over. So what a great way to re-anchor this area, what a, what a great sort of next evolution of this area. So that's all I have to say, and I look forward to seeing us come through. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number six is Jean Baird. Jean, are you on the line?
No, I'm here. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm with Friends of Point Gray Village. I've been asked to give you a bit of an overview. Friends of Point Gray Village is comprised of community and business owners who are committed to the revitalisation of the village. Our efforts include newsletters about events and new businesses, shop local campaigns, helping businesses with development applications, and working with the BIA on many projects, including a transportation committee. As noted, the village is in deep decline. We are impressed by how much the community cares about this West Point Gray and wants to see that improved. Over the past three years, Friends of Point Gray Village and our community have dedicated hundreds of volunteer hours to this important project. We recognise that a well-designed development on this three-acre site, occupying one-third of the entire commercial area of the village, because it's the smallest village in the city, could make a tremendous contribution to the enduring prosperity and livability of Point Gray. In March of 2022, almost three years ago, Friends wrote to mayor and council and asked, "We formally request council to direct staff to adopt flexibility with regard to MERC limitations." The West Point Gray community vision adopted by council in 2010 outlined the process for a comprehensive planning analysis and engagement process in advance of any rezoning for the Safeway site. We ask the city to begin community engagement now in order to clarify community needs and hopefully come up with a community developer win-win formula," end of quote. This did not happen. If starting point for the planning was the needs and ambitions of the community, the site would include a mix of housing, co-op, condos, and rentals. From that same starting point, an imaginative development would include a mix of community services to build a complete community and a fifteen-minute village, childcare to address a crisis as significant as the housing one, purpose-built library to meet the growing community. The Vancouver Public Library twenty-five-year-plan says this community needs a twelve-thousand-square-foot library, it also serves the UBC community, the current one is fifty-four hundred, and a plaza of substantial size because historically this has been a meeting place for many activities. Likewise, it would look a lot different, mid-rise rather than towers, green space and necessity of urban life, wider sidewalks, variegated, lively instead of one big facade, people-first streets, perfect place for this to happen, and a mid-block crossing because our, are longer than most of them in the city. Despite three years of community and the BIA trying to work with BGO to make this development better, very little has changed. Despite the community spending significant time attending open houses and submitting comments, little has changed. Actually, many in the community are wondering if the architect took all our constructive ideas and suggestions and applied them to the fourth Safeway, very different development, and as noted earlier, it is the same architect, they clearly have the skills. This project could have set a national example for how to redevelop an antiquated supermarket site and rejuvenate a badly-ailing urban village. Instead, we are offered an aggressive and overbuilt financial product with no village character, no community facilities, and no real concern for local scale. The previous council revised the perimeters of MERC to allow for this large development site to qualify. We ask again that if you can be flexible for the developer, you can also be flexible for the community. My colleagues are going to give some other suggestions. I would add that the site was really badly contaminated with oil contamination, sorry, dry cleaning fluid contamination. That took years, and the, that was ongoing until October of 2023, which in part accounts for the six years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker we have is number seven, Christina DiMarco.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Christina DiMarco. I'm a long-term resident of Point Gray, and I'm a big supporter of the local businesses and a strong, complete neighbourhood. I am a member of the Friends of Point Gray Village also. My position is support with additional council actions tonight. The new housing choices, the increase in population, and the return to the grocery store will certainly be a big boost to our village. The benefits of the development, however, can be enhanced with a few actions from you tonight. I will focus on three criteria to judge the merits of the proposal and point the way to council actions. One, impact on community amenities. Two, impact on existing and future residents and local businesses. Three, opportunity to implement Vancouver Plan policies. Number one, impact on community amenities. The redevelopment of Safeway sites has played a major role in community building. It has been a longstanding city policy to use developer contributions to provide local amenities. Two fairly recent examples, Marpoole, the new Safeway development provided financing towards the new community centre, and a seventy-five-place childcare. Arbutus Village, you will see housing above the Safeway, which is a hundred and twenty-five-unit social housing project run by the YWCA and a Musqueam society. There are many heartwarming stories from the seniors and single mums living there. The lack of childcare is a big issue in our community. The council report lists the childcare facilities with no comments on availability of places or expected demand generated by this new development. When asked, city staff confirmed that there is a current deficit in the neighbourhood. The new development is five hundred and seventy-one units. Thirty-seven percent or two hundred and eleven units will be two- or three-bedroom units suitable for families. These units could generate demand for over fifty places if one out of four of these units have a child of childcare age. The current childcare problem is going to be magnified. We pity the poor parents who will have to drive out of the neighbourhood, or maybe even out of the city, to secure childcare. Additional population without adequate community facilities is not a path to a better city, it is a path to a broken city. The council report states that there is no financial uplift to pay for any amenities other than the reduced rents in the below-market units. Please solve the problem and use our property tax dollars to provide a childcare. Two, impact on existing and future residents and businesses. There are ways to reduce the impact on Point Gray Place. You've heard a little bit, and you'll hear more tonight. Also, more can be done to increase the livability for future residents and the existing businesses on the north side of Tenth Avenue. This can be achieved by undergrounding the truck access from SASSMAT. We support the Point Gray BIA in this concern. And lastly, opportunity to implement Vancouver Plan policies. Vancouver Plan was adopted by council in 2022. Tenth Avenue is designated as a neighbourhood centre in the plan. Council direction L16 states, "Enhance neighbourhood centres as successful mixed-use neighbourhoods with vibrant local shopping areas, green and leafy residential streets, a wide range of housing options, and supportive amenities." People-first policies also apply to Tenth Avenue. Council direction 5.2.3 states, "Reimagine arterials to be safe and livable." In August 2023, the Point Gray BIA asked the city for Tenth Avenue to become a pilot for people-first streets. They asked for a forty-kilometre pedestrian priority zone to help slow traffic, and for a mid-block crosswalk to help improve pedestrian safety. With no actions taken, we asked Vancouver Plan implementation staff when some attention is going to be given to Point Gray Village. The answer was that large developments can be a catalyst for action by the city. There never will be a development larger than this one, so please, council, implement Vancouver Plan practices now and secure the enduring prosperity of the village. Specific council motions are listed in my written presentation, which are filed under the other category. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number eight, Jack Rowden. Jack, are you on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jack Rowden, I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'm speaking on this development. I'm a renter in the area, and I have recently gone through the challenging process of moving. From my experience, I know that finding a rental that is modern, well-maintained, close to retail, and well-connected by transit is both difficult and often unaffordable. That is why I strongly support this project. It will provide nearly six hundred new rental homes at various affordability levels, all situated near existing transit and close to the village centre. This type of housing is urgently needed and will accommodate a diverse range of renters, including UBC students, young professionals, families, empty nesters, and retirees. I also really like the new grocery store that will be added here. It will offer a convenient shopping option and attract people to the neighbourhood. I believe this project strikes the right balance of new homes, retail, and public spaces, working together to address the needs of the current and future residents. It represents a thoughtful renewal of an important site that will benefit both renters and the broader community. The size of housing availability variety and affordability is a significant factor preventing people from living here and supporting local businesses. For these reasons, I encourage council to support this application. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number nine, Jeanette Havlich. Did I pronounce your name properly?
Close enough.
I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr Mayor and city councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this rezoning application. I've lived about four blocks away from the Safeway site for almost thirty years now, and have been associated with the Friends of Point Gray Village, helping to draw attention of our neighbourhood to the importance of this site, and looking at ways that a new building could be an asset to our community. Despite the considerable talent that resides at Mus and Kettle Mackie, the architects, however, have provided a rather mediocre design that squanders the opportunity to create a project in which our neighbourhood could take real pride. Other speakers have mentioned community benefits missing in this proposal, amenities such as a daycare or a library, and our local BIA, which has been an active participant in reviewing this application, have also advocated improvements such as the mid-block pedestrian crossing. I was going to speak, though, to one aspect of the project that I think could be revised and would provide a significant improvement to the streetscape. As the referral report notes, the proposal is for what they call a continuous street wall on the shopping street. Now, the idea of a central plaza has, from the very beginning, been something that we have advanced as a key community feature, but we don't, this hasn't been provided in the project. Now, your design panel was on the verge of withholding its support for this project. Your design panel members made comments similar to the ones expressed by the community, such as, "The pedestrian experience is low. Refine the streetscape. Add fine-grained detail at the pedestrian level. Provide small-scale retail units." Now, the lukewarm reception ended in a tie, which was just broken by a favourable vote by the chair of the design panel. Now, this did result in some minor improvements to the design, but the design panel suggested enhancement of the frontage on West Tenth could still be improved. Now, the one aspect that seems that could be changed, that would make a big difference, is the location and design of an entrance to the big-box style grocery store, and I would just point out that that's in around, in the range of thirty-seven thousand square feet, so it's a big one. The conditions recommended by your staff in appendix B, which are very good ones, but they all deal with improving the proposed plaza. Now, that's the space that separates the new development from the existing apartment at Tenth and Tolme. Now, that's welcome, but it still misses that opportunity to enliven Tenth at the entrance to the grocery store. So the drawing's showing us a rather unrelenting wall at the sidewalk with one entrance into the enormous grocery store. It's not giving us much interest, variety, or joy to our shopping street. So I'm suggesting that you consider adding a condition to the approval of this application along the lines of design development, to provide at the mid-block a recessed entry to the grocery store of sufficient size so that we would have some seating, a display area of the grocery materials, and a distinctive feature, which could be public art, we've got a million dollars to spend, landscaping, or water feature. So thank you for considering that suggestion.
Thank you very much. Speaker number ten, Daniel Ananakosa.
Good evening, mayor and council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all today. My name is Daniel. I'm a commerce student at the University of British Columbia, residing in Vancouver, and I'm here to speak in favour of the application. I think this project is desperately needed, and I think it represents a much-needed revitalisation of the Point Gray community. Since I've been a student at UBC, and since I've been living in the city, I've witnessed, like a lot of us, the revolving door of small and medium-sized businesses in the area, and many of which have struggled to stay afloat. The commercial businesses along West Tenth have been opening and closing repeatedly, and a lot of these hard-working entrepreneurs that have poured their hearts into creating something of their own and providing goods and services to the great people of our city are finding it hard to even survive, let alone thrive. The lack of anchor tenants and adequate commercial services to draw people and businesses into the area has created something of a has created something of a transient community where small businesses are increasingly forced to rely on food delivery services or other stop-gap measures. In short, we've created something akin to a DoorDash/Uber Eats economy. This development would be a great step in the right direction, bringing much-needed economic growth and activity to the area and creating a more vibrant and successful business community. Beyond supporting our city's local businesses, this development provides additional critically-needed housing options for faculty, staff, and students at nearby UBC. The distance between Point Gray and UBC make it a very popular location for UBC community members. This, coupled with limited supply, contributes to skyrocketing prices for all those close by. Increased density means fewer long commutes, a more connected community, and better access to essential services for UBC community members and long-term residents. While this may not be a concern of council, I want to highlight a broader issue impacting a big constituency of people in the city. It's students, and that is the cost of living crisis, especially when it comes to food prices. Those living on campus at UBC are faced with some of the most expensive food options in the city. Students are faced with the choice between Savon Food and Urban Fair. Like hundreds of my peers, I've made the bus trip down to Knofrills, two bags in hand, bussed back, fighting for my life to stand up in there. It's not an easy task, as many of my peers would let you know. This development would also aid affordability in the area and would go a long way towards providing stability for students who see themselves creating a long-term future in the city. As someone residing close to the proposed development, I've personally witnessed multiple repeat rounds of public engagement that have occurred. I believe the developers prove that they're not only committed to the success of the development, but the wellbeing of the surrounding neighbourhood. I want to conclude by saying that I have a great deal of love for the city. It has given me a home and a place to grow, and for that, I will be forever grateful. I want nothing more than to create a life for myself here, but sadly, that dream is increasingly out of reach, not just for me, but for thousands of my peers and those in my age bracket. But it's not too late for us. These developments are one part of a solution, making it possible for young people to envision a future, an affordable future, in Vancouver, to contribute to its economy and to build the next chapter in this city's history. It is for these reasons that I strongly support the application, and I humbly and strongly encourage council to do the same. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Daniel. Speaker number eleven, Zach Severin.
Thank you, council, and thank you, Mayor Sim. Just to introduce myself, my name is Zachary Severin. I'm born and raised in Vancouver, British Columbia. I attended Kitsellano Secondary, and with that, I spent the majority of my time around Dunbar, around Kitsellano, and also, of course, Point Gray. With that, now, my little brother, who's fifteen years old, is attending Bing Secondary. And there, just to give a walk-through of the neighbourhood, his options for food at lunch, of course. Both my parents work, so there's not many opportunities for them to provide him a meal. And what that leads to is him and his peers having the access to Tim Hortons, Subway, and Dairy Queen. There's no nutritional aspects that are really valued. There's no access to community, to food options, but also to really that opportunity for learning and navigating grocery stores. I know for me, going to Kitsellano, it was the great chance to have a cheaper option, to sometimes know that there was a meal that was affordably priced, that I had those options, and I could also shop around. It meant that I was educated on nutrition, on access, and understanding what it is about being a responsible citizen a lot earlier. Going into that, I think it's really, really important to talk about what this space currently is. I've grown up on the west side of Vancouver, and with that, I have friends all over Point Gray. And what I've heard is probably some of the most complaints out of any incident around the Safeway. I've heard so many issues regarding, like, for example, growing up, my favourite toy store was Kaboodles. It was there, it was an institution. It brought memories to thousands of families, and they were forced to close a number of years ago. There's a lot of cases like that, and it's only going to continue, and it's only going to increase. And I think it brings us to really what the core of this conversation is. And we want to talk about community, but I do think it's important to note that it's about privilege. I think it is about a select few who come from a very, very privileged position to be able to set boundaries and barriers in place to stop the next generation from having the opportunities they had for themselves, but also to not engage and understand that there's a genuine need for a community anchor like the Safeway would provide, and also to have true social housing opportunity and would really set a precedent that I think is pretty pivotal as we go into this next chapter of Canada's history, to encourage not the DoorDash, not the Uber Eats economy, but shopping local, and to having that chance and that opportunity. I know for myself, I had the very grateful opportunity to find a place in UBC. But I know that for many of my peers, what that has now mean is the challenge of being a full-time student faced with more than over an hour commute each day, coming from around Forty-Ninth Street, and really also, on the same time, having to pick up multiple part-time jobs where you don't have the time to commit to your studies, to your own engagement and your own learning, because you're too worried about survival. And I think one of this is a question about if a few people might lose their views versus, at greater length, the first opportunity for true social housing this close to UBC, and in general, the Dunbar, and most importantly, Point Gray neighbourhood, which, without this project, will only continue to decline. I believe that the developers have done everything in their power, understanding that they had multiple opportunities through a way-too-rigorous regulation process, when they could have sold this off to other developers who are more than willing to step through and just make a bunch of luxury apartments, because that is what would be in this place. They have put every effort in to make sure that this can be something that the city can be proud of, but also genuinely does social good and impacts people at the end of the day. And I see no issue whatsoever. I've engaged with multiple people in my community, multiple of my friends who've lived there for decades, and the biggest divide is between those who have young adults in their household who understand the dire and critical need for housing, and those who are in a point of privilege to be able to have no connection to the next generation. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Zach. The next speaker is speaker number twelve, Gladys Lowen. Gladys, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to address this important meeting to the mayor and to the council. I moved to Point Gray fourteen, almost fifteen years ago, from South Surrey. We picked this area after looking around for a year because we wanted livability, walkability, parks and stuff. And so for us, we specifically chose to retire in Point Gray. It appears to me that there are five types of people or groups interested or involved in this development of the former Safeway site at 4545 West Tenth Avenue. Number one, unhoused people, or those at risk of being unhoused. My daughter is one of these, and she has been renovated two times. Second group, housing advocates who only want housing or are organised and mobilised beyond their communities. It appears that, in some cases, PR companies are paid by developers to mobilise these groups, especially on Reddit. Number three, residents of Point Gray community, renters and owners appreciate the walkability, the services and resources. They support the community since this is their home. Number four, the rich international multibillion-dollar holding company, BGO, with headquarters in Florida and its investors. And number five, the city, the mayor, the councillors, and the staff. It feels like a tug-of-war between the developer wanting to enrich its coffers and the pockets of the investors versus the residents of Point Gray, as well as future residents who want to maintain the village feel and increase commercial offerings and services, truly make our village livable. As people have pointed out, it's been in decline lately. It would not be a tug-of-war if a developer chose to communicate with the community, to network and plan together to meet the needs of Point Gray, to make it a vibrant and livable place where people know each other and can meet in a green community space and feel a part of the village, where families are welcome. Instead, we are presented with a concrete jungle with limited increase in commercial offerings other than a grocery store. There's been, the drawings show very tiny little commercial spots beyond the large boxwood grocery store. There's no childcare, there's no larger library, as noted in the Vancouver Public Library Twenty-Five Year Plan, no viable space for community activities. So it's not really fully family-friendly. The city is in a difficult place, and in large part of its own making. I understand that, it's a tough place to be. But it appears that the city is giving more weight to the demands of this large, wealthy international corporation with limited concerns for the needs of the community. The international corporation and its investors make money. They all have profit. They were getting profit out of this project, with much of their profits going out of B C and even out of Canada. In this current environment, this is of great concern. Building a large complex with minimal-sized units without services for residents is a disservice not only to future residents of this site, but also to all of the residents of the village. The reality for families looking for livable space under the Moderate-Income Rental Housing Pilot Project, a programme at 4545 West Tenth Avenue, is that they will have small rooms. They're probably going to be wait-listed for childcare. Their children might be attending a school outside of the catchment area. And if they have to drive to school in another area or take their children in another area to daycare with limited parking, about a third of the residents will not have a parking stall. So that's going to be an issue. The library is also bursting at its space. It's half the space that it should be according to the Twenty-Five Year Plan. It's a fraud to assume that this project will serve families as one-bedroom units make up the largest portion of all the units in this design. And at the open houses, the two open houses that I attended, BGO staff made it clear that it does not expect families to rent most units, as it really expects that students will be occupying most of the units. That's the university students. So why are Vancouver taxpayers subsidising UBC housing? That task belongs to the UBC, not to the city. The city must decide.
Gladys, I apologize, we're at time.
Okay.
But thank you very much for calling in.
Mayor, I have a point of procedure.
Yes.
Recognizing the time, and we seem to be moving through speakers quite well, and I know we have a lot of speakers that are expecting to speak tonight, I'm wondering if council would entertain a motion to pass ten o'clock to continue and complete the speakers list and refer debate and decision to the next scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, March eleventh.
Okay, great. And just so we're clear, for that vote to pass, we would need two-thirds voting in favour. So, any discussion? No? All in favour say aye. Aye. Yes, we did, councillor.
That's what I did, yeah.
Okay, all opposed say nay. Great, well, it passes with more than two-thirds. Okay, so we will continue, we'll work to continue the speakers list. Great, thank you. Okay, so just for the records, speaker number thirteen was actually, she was supposed to be on the previous item, which the speaker was. So we're going to go to speaker number fourteen, Karen Hunter.
Good evening. I have lived within a four-block radius of the previous Safeway site for over sixty years. And during this time, I've witnessed numerous changes, not only to West Point Gray, but also along Tenth Avenue. Tenth Avenue used to be very vibrant and alive with shoppers and people enjoying coffee or a meal in one of the many eating places. Since the Safeway closed down around seven years ago, Tenth Avenue has become, as you've heard other speakers say, much like a ghost town. In addition to the Safeway closing, several small businesses have also closed down due to lack of business. The previous Safeway site used to be the meeting place on Tenth Avenue. If you wanted to meet up with a friend, it was always, "Well, let's meet outside of the Safeway". It was not unusual to see girl guides selling cookies, boy scouts selling apples, or other activities happening in the Safeway parking lot. West Point Gray has a great opportunity to once again have a place in which the residents can gather to socialise, relax, and enjoy the fresh air, or meet up with friends in the community. The new housing complex that will be built on the previous Safeway site should not only provide services to the residents living within these buildings, but also provide adequate amenities to support the needs of West Point Gray Village due to the projected higher density. This is an opportunity to provide services to people of all ages. For example, creating a space for a daycare to support young working families, a seniors' centre to provide programmes for our aging population, or even a larger space for West Point Gray Library to expand. These are ways in which the entire community would benefit from this proposed housing complex. The plan for this housing complex must complement the existing character which makes West Point Gray unique. Incorporating a courtyard or plaza for the whole community to enjoy is essential, as well as allowing adequate space for people to enjoy the beauty which is found in nature. And last but not least is the need to create a safe community. Lowering the speed to forty kilometres per hour is essential throughout Tenth Avenue between Discovery Street and Tolme Street. Also, the addition of a pedestrian crosswalk between Sassamatt Street and Tolme Street is essential to allow people to safely cross Tenth Avenue to enter the proposed grocery store and housing complex. This is a wonderful opportunity to revitalise the village of West Point Gray. So please consider our needs, that is, the community's needs, not just the needs of the developer. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you regarding the neighbourhood in which I've lived all of my life, which is West Point Gray. We deserve to have a vibrant village with community supports once again. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for coming in. Speaker number fifteen, Dan Holloway. Dan, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm a lifelong Vancouver resident and also a former UBC student and later employee of UBC. So as with many of the callers here this evening, I'm very familiar with this area and the grocery store, and you know, this neighbourhood served me for well over fifteen years of my early life. And it really is a special, special place to me. And I think it's really important that we focus on supporting this project because that huge number of rental homes, I think it's around five hundred and seventy, will really reinvigorate this neighbourhood. Lots of the callers have spoken about, you know, the death of the neighbourhood, which I've witnessed. There used to be pubs, restaurants, all kinds of really amazing businesses, that students, locals, people would come from across town. There used to be a movie theatre there. The first, I think the first or second Cactus Club was there. It was great. And, you know, having a huge number of new rental in that will really, I think, revitalise the area. The close proximity to UBC and transit routes is already even commented on. I've lived on campus, and I can tell you how difficult it is to accommodate housing that just simply is not enough units. But, you know, as a student on campus, you're not isolated to the university. You are out in the city of Vancouver contributing to all those local restaurants and businesses and pubs like I just spoke of. We all know that housing's need and I really hope that we'll support this project because I think it will be a great benefit to the local community. And I think I've seen a fair number of comments on the newspapers and various blogs and things like that about the responsiveness of this developer to the community feedback. And I hope that they'll deliver a high quality project that adds value to the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Dan. I'm surprised, I'm surprised no one's mentioned Candia yet. Do you, no? Guys don't remember that? Yes, Candia. And Mr. Mike-
It's still there, I think. It's still there, isn't it?
Sorry, you know, Candia definitely is not there, but thank you very much. Okay, thank you for calling in. Speaker number sixteen is Pia Montez. Pia, are you there?
Hello?
Hi, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Pia Montez and I support this proposal. I appreciate the opportunity to participate tonight and I will keep my comments brief. My family and I moved to Vancouver from Chile when I was young and we came here because my dad was pursuing a master's degree at UBC. Naturally, we landed in the university in downtown Lyons and I am a proud University Hill secondary alumni. I am very familiar with the old Safeway site, which is where my family went grocery shopping growing up. I understand that this property has been vacant for some time and that plans are underway to build new rental housing and retail here, including a new grocery store. I support this proposal and thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number seventeen, Eric Freeboth.
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, please go ahead.
Hello, councillors, my name is Eric Freeboth. I am a resident of Vancouver and spent many, many years here in Carisdale. I support this rezoning application and am glad that plans are in motion to build more rental and moderate income housing in Vancouver, like what is being proposed here. This is a desirable location particularly for UBC students and employees, as well as an opportunity to build new homes with zero loss of existing housing. Thank you for considering my comments. I hope that council will approve this application.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number eighteen, Brandon Price.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Brandon Price. I'm born and raised Vancouverite. I went to Kitsellano High School and currently live in Dunbar with my, my family not far from the proposed development. I've been following the plans to renew this vacant site for quite some time and happy to absolutely put my support behind the proposal. You know, it's unfortunate to see the decline of West Tenth and what it was and how I remember it when I was, you know, a younger, younger fellow in the, in the neighborhood and growing up in the west side. This project will deliver new, much needed housing to revitalize retail in the area, bring more vibrance and livelihood back to Point Gray Village along West Tenth Avenue that has, like I mentioned, seen quite a decline that I, I didn't expect to see in that quadrant. This was a very vibrant retail zone and things have changed over the last five years or so since the site has been vacant. As a local resident, I'm absolutely pleased to see the plans to bring back the grocery store. It'll be a welcome amenity to the neighborhood. I feel like it will springboard the neighborhood and alleviate some of that vacancy that, that everyone's seeing along West Tenth. And it will also help reduce the vehicle traffic likely that typically comes along with added residential density, given future residents will be able to access the daily essentials that are located on the property based on the proposed rezoning. In consideration of the broader housing context, as our community continues to grow as it's expected to, I do think we need these new housing units and see Point Gray as an appropriate location for this added density near the current and proposed transit services and UBC, which is the largest employer in Vancouver and sees over sixty thousand in annual enrollment at their main campus. Thank you very much for listening to my comments. I hope this project receives approval.
Great, thank you very much, Brandon. Speaker number nineteen, Art Warburton. Art, can you hear us?
I hear you well, do you hear me?
We can hear you. If you can do us one favor, I know you have a PowerPoint presentation, so every time you want us to move the slides, can you just say next slide?
I will do that.
Thank you very much.
I decided rather just to, yeah, I will only speak to you. You can put up the first slide, that would be fine. So thank you very much for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a resident of Point Gray Place. I'm speaking as an individual.
Okay, here you go.
My focus tonight will be on the relationship between sustainable design and transit access.
Arthur, next.
How is that relevant to the proposal that you're considering? Well, if rapid transit to UBC eventually bypasses Tenth Avenue-
They're calling you.
There is a, hello, hello? Do you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Well, if rapid transit access to UBC eventually bypasses Tenth Avenue, there's a significant risk that the development will become underserved by fast transit. We can reduce that risk by making the right choices. Let's examine that situation more closely. It's important to consider the transit environment. The applicant states that the development location is almost ideal for large scale, higher density development. Ninety-nine B provides excellent tracks and transit access, a two minute walk away from the development. In effect, ninety-nine B is a Skytrain substitute minute just across the street. I love the ninety-nine. It might be difficult though to maintain that access in the future. To get a sense of the possibilities, let's just imagine a scenario here, one that has often been discussed, or at least that I've heard. A millennial extension to UBC bypasses Tenth Avenue, replacing ninety-nine B, which has slower, less frequent bus service. Gereco Station is a hilly, one kilometer walk away at least. And not only that, but many future residents in the development rely on public transit to go to work. That is a bad outcome for the, for the development's residents and for the city. In effect, Kenton Tolme has become an isolated, underserved demand dump or demand lump, should I say. Summarizing, maintaining ninety-nine level B service turned out to be critical for transit sustainability. Okay, so how does transit sustainability relate to the decision tonight? The rezoning policy for sustainable large development applies here. The policy stated expectation is, and I quote, "Large developments are expected to demonstrate leadership in sustainable design. With respect to transit, the stated intent is to support access to fast, frequent and reliable transit." Summarizing, it should be an easy walk from a large development to the nearest fast access point. So, within the expectations, is the applicant showing leadership in sustainable design? Let's answer, let's examine that question. Despite considerable opposition, the applicants, applicants made a design choice to apply for high density. They made that choice in the full knowledge of the significant risk of creating an isolated, underserved demand lump at Kenton Tolme. The applicants could have chosen a safer, less risky design, lower density. A lower density choice would be much less vulnerable to loss of the ninety-nine level B service, the ninety-nine B level service. Their design choices so far are contrary to the principle of sustainable design. So, is the applicant demonstrating leadership in sustainable design? Clearly, the answer is not yet. The good news is that there are remedies. Transit sustainability is achievable. How? Well, as a first step, council might encourage the applicants to defer a high density proposal till the future transit uncertainties are sufficiently resolved. That could take some time. If the applicants want more immediate approval, they could scale down the project to something more clearly sustainable. In either case, the applicants will be in a far better position to establish sustainability and show leadership if they can show that they are able to balance the site's transit demand with the expected transit supply. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Great, thank you.
And I'm still undecided. I hope that they can get the big one, but I fear that there are issues. It's going to take a while to be suitable for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Speaker number twenty, Winky Tam.
Hi there, sound okay?
Yeah, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Winky Tam and I'm a lifelong resident of Vancouver. I'm also the Director of Strategy and Development at the Downtown Vancouver Business Improvement Association. I am speaking tonight on behalf of our President and CEO to share our support for the rezoning application and will paraphrase our letter of support. Our organization, Downtown Van, we represent eight thousand businesses and every day around a hundred thirty thousand people come into our district to work. A project like this bringing a new mixed use retail and residential home adds much needed rental housing without displacing anybody with over five hundred new units. Even though this development is outside of our downtown, it directly and positively impacts the central business district. A strong rental market helps us attract and retain talent, keeping our economy competitive. Beyond rental housing, we also recognize this project brings other key benefits, improving the livability in our community, including the return of a landmark grocery store, an enormous public plaza for community gatherings, and better transit access and an important hub on the ninety-nine B line. At the end of the day, having more rental housing near downtown is a win for our city. It strengthens our economy, supports workers, and adds to, adds to the vibrancy of our community. Thanks for your time and consideration, folks.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number one, Kyle Vincent.
I'm a neighbor to the project, living in one of the existing multi-unit residential buildings. I'm literally a stone's throw away from the project site. I am also a full-time staff member at UBC. I work in the planning department, but right now I speak as a private citizen. I would like to state my support for the project. Through my work in the UBC planning department, I've heard folks from across the university wishing for more affordable housing and for more affordable grocery options. And I think this project could deliver on both. I think the number of secured moderate income housing is a positive step towards this. At my current role at, at my current role at UBC, my current commute time is less than ten minutes on my bike, or about fifteen minutes on transit depending on the wait time. I have access to great shops and amenities that line West Tenth Avenue and have access to the rest of Vancouver with convenient access on the ninety-nine and fourteen, plus of course, the regional connectivity with UBC Exchange in proximity. The reality I describe, the reality that I live in, would not be possible without the existence of rental housing stock in West Point Gray. The unfortunate reality is I can't afford a mortgage, even with my partner's combined income. And the reality is that many of my peers, recent grads to UBC, young professionals, young families and newcomers alike, can't afford to purchase one of the many beautiful single-family homes that line West Point Gray. But not being able to purchase should not exclude you from living a transit oriented development in proximity to work or school. This project offers a chance for many to live that dream. I personally am looking forward to the promise of a revitalized commercial strip that this project may bring. I look forward to the new grocery store, new retail options and new neighbors. And I'm really appreciative that the developer has been focused on responding to community feedback in a way I haven't seen with many other projects. I am in support for this project for my peers, for the future of young people, and for the neighbors in West Point Gray. With this project, we can have a complete community and revitalized, revitalized commercial strip. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kyle. Speaker number two, or sorry, twenty-two, Christina, I'm gonna, sorry, I'm gonna probably mispronounce her last name, Egged?
You did a very good job. It's Christina Egged and I'm, I'm calling as the Executive Director, newly appointed to the role for the Point Gray Village Business Improvement Association. And we are in support of this project, looking for revitalization of the Point Gray area, not just for the businesses, but also for the community and residents as a whole, in order to have the ability to create more space, places and spaces for gathering, for increasing the economic development in the community, and as well to welcome new owner, new residents into our community. We're very happy to see again the design changes that BGO has gone forward with in order to meet some of the requests of the Business Improvement Association. We would like to point out that we're hoping that the city of Vancouver will continue with the traffic calming in the area along Tenth Avenue as more people are using the street in a positive way. And we're also looking forward to retail mix that is diverse and is inclusive of independent local businesses. And one design piece that we're hoping to address later on, but again, are very happy to support this project at this point, is just to ensure that we have noise, noise considerations taken into account as the building goes up and loading docks are thought through. So again, we are in support of this project at this point and look forward again to welcoming new people into our neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number twenty-three, Peter Dowdy. Peter, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, great, please go ahead.
Before I begin, I would like to point something out. A previous speaker made the claim that housing supporters were being paid by developers and mobilized to come to speak in favor of proposals. I'm a housing supporter and I'm not paid by anyone. I request that council reject claims made by speakers to this effect in keeping with your policy on non-disparagement. That said, I do support this proposal. It will create hundreds of homes in and revitalize a part of the city that is languishing economically. West Point Gray's population has been effectively stagnant for thirty years. That doesn't mean that the neighborhood is unchanged. Its businesses are struggling and it is losing that community center character that it once had. Yet it is somehow a debate whether or not an empty lot should be turned into a grocery store and housing. Is there anything more appropriate to a city than grocery stores and housing? This proposal has both an abundance, as well as subsidized housing to help ensure households with a mix of incomes can live in the area, a plaza that will give people a place to congregate, and further retail space to create opportunities for new and exciting businesses to set up. Yet, it has faced concerted opposition by people who do not want it to be built. The first complaint is that the buildings are tall. But buildings need to be tall on the outside if they are to be large on the inside. So many people complain about the shrinking of apartments while demanding the shrinking of buildings. The second complaint is parking. The cities aren't built for cars, they're built for people. Highways are built for cars. Has anyone ever visited a world-class city and been impressed primarily by the width of the roads? The third complaint is that people might live here but study, work or shop elsewhere. Where do you draw those lines? Are not we all equally entitled to this city? These complaints are all fundamentally the same complaint, that Vancouver is a city. And so it is. It is a great city. It is a city that many people want to live in. The fact that for fifty years our approach to planning has been to avoid acknowledging this is a tragedy. Housing critics do not speak for the neighbors who will be able to walk to grocery stores, or the students who will be able to bus to UBC, or the people who will find new employment in the businesses that will open where currently nobody finds any kind of work at all. This proposal will give hundreds of people the chance to live, work and play in this neighborhood. It will give its current residents access to groceries, retail stores and public space. What could be better than that? This project has been delayed too long. Council should immediately approve the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker number twenty-four is Taylor Westermar Curran. Please go ahead.
I'm not on the line in a moment.
I'm a resident of Vancouver. I'm not involved in real estate development or construction and I'm here to speak in support of the project. I lived right across the street from this project at two six two five Tolme from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, and I loved living in Point Gray. It was a great neighborhood, there's a grocery store, coffee shops, sushi restaurants- It was a great neighborhood. There's a grocery store, coffee shops, sushi restaurants, banks, hardware store, the library, all within walking distance. But while I lived there, I saw the neighborhood start to decline, and I was there when the Safeway closed. The reason is pretty simple. Point Gray isn't a destination shopping location. It depends on nearby residents, and the population of the neighborhood has been stagnant or declining for a generation. The vast majority of nearby homes are luxury, single-family homes that sell for three-point-five million each. If you had a twenty-five percent or twenty percent down payment, you would need more than half a million dollars in annual income to buy there. This project will bring hundreds of affordable rental units that average people can afford to live in to this neighborhood. It'll fill a gaping hole in the heart of this retail district, and it'll bring back a major anchor grocery store to the neighborhood. It will let a lot of new people live within walking distances of shops and services on a frequent transit corridor, and when the new Skytrain extension opens, it'll be a short walk down to there. In summary, I think this is a great project. It's gonna help revitalize Point Gray. It's gonna bring a bunch of market and below-market rentals, and it's gonna allow a lot more people to live close to shops, services, and transit, and I hope council will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Taylor. Speaker number twenty-five, Rebecca Hartley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Rebecca Hartley and I'm a resident of Vancouver. And I'm here tonight to voice my support for the proposal at four-five-four-five, four-five-seven-five, West Tenth Avenue. Attending UBC every day, I would go through this community and stop in at the shops and restaurants on the way to or from school. Over the years, I saw how UBC had flourished and continues to add more residents, amenities, and stores. While in contrast, I've seen West Point Gray stagnate with time. It's for this reason I'm excited to see this proposal go forward. It's gonna help bring life back to the community. Both new and existing residents will enjoy this thoughtfully-designed building as the towers have been shifted away from Tenth Avenue with a reduction in the podium's height to make it less imposing. Both will get to catch up with some friends or neighbors in the now-enhanced plaza that retains an intimate feel where they could enjoy a coffee from a new cafe. This will also be good news for the existing schools in the area, as they are currently under capacity. This means more children will be able to attend school in their neighborhood. This proposal will also provide teachers and other support staff a place to live that is close to their workplace, meaning they won't have to endure a long commute home to be with their family and friends. Not that they'll have to travel far to rest, relax, and play, as there are plenty of amenities in the area, like the nearby Pacific Spirit Regional Park, multiple trails, and the future Jericho Lands as well. The building also offers ample space for their residents, with numerous garden plots, space to host that first summer party, or to read a book while their kids burn off some energy in the outdoor play space. Given this, I hope you'll join me in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is number twenty-six, Christine Wang. Christine, are you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you great. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Christine A. Wang, W-A-N-G. And I'm exactly the type of resident that you're all talking about. Yearly salary eighty thousand, and with a school-age child. And our unit is literally the closest unit to the site. We live right above the site in neighboring building, within three meters. When the workers are talking there, we wave to each other because they can hear me and I can hear them. And so if you have any questions about the pros and cons, feel free to ask me. I know the site may be better than some of the workers. And for, in terms of growth, I see the chart says even the moderate rental is slightly below three thousand for two bedrooms. Using our family as an example, I have a son, so we need two bedrooms. And then my monthly salary after tax of eighty thousand is about five thousand something. So even for the moderate twenty percent housing, it's still over fifty percent of my after-tax salary each month. And with some credits, I could barely afford the moderate, right? I can barely hang on to that. So one solution is actually for them to increase the percentage from twenty to maybe thirty or thirty-five. So at least one-third of the people can actually afford the rental on a regular salary. And that, I think, explains the stagnation of the population, because people like me with children, we'd love to live somewhere here, but you know, the mass is there. And also with children, the other technical difficulty is this is a mixed residential-commercial development. I know a lot of business people and a lot of people just think about the commercial side, but we literally live upstairs with a kid that needs to do homework and we need some green space, right? To be sustainable, the twenty-first floor, nineteenth-floor tower, that's like downtown, right? Families with children, do I really want to spend like fifty, sixty percent of my after-tax income to live in a box in a downtown situation? Yes, with Earl, with the bars, but it's not really for families. And so that's why I agree with the other ladies that said, you know, better design. Some mid-rises is possible if they can still make a profit, maybe just less of profit, but make it a little bit more sustainable, you know, with more green spaces so the kid can walk around a little bit. And that's all. These are my suggestions. And I really hope that the architect, the sir, and everyone has the best interest of the, you know, the local residents, like us. I've been living here for over, same unit, for over ten years. And if possible, we don't want to, you know, move and we want to attract more people like me, right? Hopefully. And but it's not the number, just the number of housing. It's also the relative quality. We're not demanding luxury, but something that's actually livable for more than five, six years for families with children, right? Thank you. I don't want to repeat myself, but thank you so much. And yeah. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate you calling in. The next speaker is speaker number twenty-seven, Drishdi Katwani.
Yes, hello. Hello, Mayor Sim, City Council members, and everyone present today. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak today. My name is Drishdi Katwani and I am a student at the University of British Columbia and a member of the Vancouver Housing Market Club. I'm here to speak in support of the proposed rezoning project. And I want to say that I am a UBC student, and with my support today, I represent and speak for my UBC community. This project presents a much needed opportunity to increase rental housing supply, provide below-market rental options, all while supporting a more sustainable and vibrant community in Vancouver. As a student in Vancouver, I have experienced firsthand the challenges of finding affordable and accessible housing near campus. It is without a doubt that the housing crisis in Vancouver must be continuously addressed, and this project, which tackles this directly, cannot be easily dismissed. An important point to consider is what is the relationship between UBC and Vancouver. Not only is UBC a university that hosts students, but it's also one of Vancouver's top employers and provides thousands of jobs for people in Vancouver. Point Gray is a popular area for people who return to UBC, and with high rental costs and lack of supply of rental units, the lives of domestic and international students and staff become increasingly more difficult and unsustainable. Not only is higher supply of rental options per area incredibly important, but the below-market rental options is a progressive development plan, ensuring that the Vancouver housing crisis is effectively handled and it supports, as it supports and takes into account the ranges of income, including students, young professionals, and all university staff. These rental options that are closer to campus, especially because the proposed rezoning project is for a mixed-use development project and for high-density amount, it will reduce the commutes for students and workers. Due to incredibly high rental prices in the area, a lot of students and workers can only find sustainable housing in areas such as Burnaby and Surrey on locations of a sort. This rezoning project will reduce commuting times, lower transportation costs, as well as acts as a stepping stone to reducing carbon footprint. Additionally, the accessibility to mixed-use development will allow residents to strengthen local businesses as well as have the opportunity to work in these local businesses. The rezoning project is a smart, future-focused development that meets the needs of students, young professionals, and the local community, and helps Vancouver grow in a responsible and sustainable way. Being an international student, I hold such respect and love for this city for the opportunity that it has granted me. To build a future here would be an incredible opportunity and it would be an incredible blessing, and this is still and increasingly becoming more difficult to achieve. I hope that the council allows students such as myself to realistically see a future in this city. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. The next speaker is number twenty-eight, Kavi Tor. Kavi, are you on the line?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay, great. Hey, everyone. My name is Kavi Tor and I'm the Managing Director for UBC Athletics and Recreation. Part of my role is overseeing all the high-performance and recreational programs and facilities on campus. And undoubtedly, the concern that I hear the most in interacting with students on a weekly basis is the needs for housing as they plan their journey at UBC. Although at the university, we've got tremendous on-campus housing for our students, over twelve thousand, where the bustling campus needs a far outstrip the available supply on campus. So I'm seeking in favor of the project to meet the need for housing for our community, but also not only for that reason, I think there's a tremendous opportunity to build community in that Point Gray corridor, which was the bustling corridor of student and resident life connecting UBC and the city of Vancouver. So I think that the building community piece is very valuable. And I also want to note to council that UBC in April is opening a hundred thousand-square-foot new recreation center that that in addition to our pool and rink facilities offer tremendous recreational amenities for potentially increased residents in the neighborhood. Thanks very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is speaker number twenty-nine, Joan Jaccard.
Hello, I'm here, yes. Yeah. Thank you. My name is Joan Jaccard. I am a forty-year resident of West Point Gray and I'm familiar with the once-thriving and now-declined nature of our village High Street. I oppose the CD1 rezoning due to the particulars of this development proposal. Point Gray Village desperately needs density for revitalization. With our proximity to UBC, rental properties make sense. Despite the parameters of the MIRP program and its intention to provide affordable housing, with the current real estate economics in Vancouver and rental rates, there is little affordability in this proposal for those most in need of housing. If we are not building affordable housing for the citizens and prospective citizens of Vancouver, who are we building it for? My primary objections to this proposal are the lack of developer response and planning department's support of well-fought-out, on-the-ground community amenity initiatives by the Friends of Point Gray Village, some members of whom are former City of Vancouver planners. They know the village intimately, how it works and how it doesn't work. Their constructive input to the project has the support of many community members. I wholly support the written submission by the Friends of Point Gray Village. The positive changes to the revised proposal primarily came from their initiatives, including tower setbacks, dual parking entrances, and improved street frontage articulation. The primary issues, like designated space for specific community needs, library, daycare, repositioning a public plaza area to the east or central entry of the site, where the predominant pedestrian approach is, this was supported by the Urban Design Panel, and more small-scale shop frontages have been ignored. The brilliant idea of a mid-block road-crossing proposal for pedestrian site access, safety, and traffic calming have sadly not been considered. Think of Dunderay Village on Marine Drive in West Van as a great example of what is possible. The Florida-based REIT developer is not familiar with the site context or isn't interested, and it is a responsibility of the planning department to be the advocate for the community which knows the village well. If approved as is, this will be a huge missed opportunity by the city to make this rezoning proposal a major benefit and contributor to the vitality of West Point Gray Village. We have had the benefit of experienced professional urban planning advocates in the community, working for years to steer this proposal in a creative and heartfelt village revitalization direction. And I am dismayed and disappointed at the lack of receptiveness and response on the part of the city. If approved in principle, I hope and expect the planning manager and staff to further articulate this project to a best practices outcome. This development proposal has the potential to be a positive example within the Vancouver Plan's Neighborhood Center designation. If the city settles in support of the developer's resistance to adapt for the good of the community, it sets a poor precedent for livable, vibrant neighborhood center proposals to come. I urge you to reject this proposal and send it back to the drawing board to address the issues I've raised. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Speaker number thirty, Devon Hessek.
Okay. I'll start off by saying thank you for voting to extend. I think everyone here understands it's been a long day for all of you and it's appreciated that you're not making, whether they're supportive, opposed, or other speakers, come back for another day. And you're hopefully clearly very tired. So again, thank you. With that said, good evening, Mayor Sim, members of City Council. My name is Devon Hessek and I've been a resident and homeowner in Vancouver for almost fourteen years now. For about a third of that time, I served on the Jericho Lands Working Group. It feels a little surreal to say that out loud, that four years of my life were spent getting to know West Point Gray, the concerns of its residents, their hopes for the future, and their ongoing fight to win back a grocery store. Those experiences are why I'm happy to support this proposal. And my reasons go beyond wanting to provide my friends a closer place to grab a forgotten jug of milk for cereal in the morning. I think something you can all suffice with right now. Still, that convenience is important, whether you live in a bustling city, quiet suburb, or rural hamlet. No village is truly complete without their grocery store. It's a fixture in any community, and for some, it requires government subsidies. But in West Point Gray, it turns out all this necessary is creating homes that our city and this neighborhood badly need. Some will argue the multiplex policy can fix that shortage, that it gives elderly parents a chance to provide home for their kids. However, that ignores that people need to live somewhere right now while their homes are demolished and replaced. Seniors don't have a place to live in West Point Gray when their home needs renovation to preserve their mobility, or when there's emergency repairs required on a rainy day, let alone the ability to find somewhere to downsize to. Still, this desperate need for housing doesn't mean we should act like a teenager at a prom. It's good for our city to have standards, and this project meets them, in my opinion. It has gotten there by responding to community feedback. This resulted in more public space, a reduction in the podium's height along West Tenth Avenue, and moving the towers to provide more privacy and light for its neighbors. This proposal looks vastly different from the terrace pair of buildings that were presented at the pre-application open house that I attended in twenty-two, in 2022. Maybe the applicants can dig up that old design for you. It's not in the staff report. Either way, it's clear this proposal has undergone significant revisions, I think at least three, and I can't begin to imagine how much that cost. Of course, there are plenty of demands this one development hasn't satisfied. It's not perfect, because after all, this is the real world and one building can't deliver anything, everything. There was a time in our city when burnt-out industrial areas allowed city planners to design entire neighborhoods from the ground up, to demand everything of them, and leave the bill, the cost of a burden, to new residents. Those days, like our sense of invincibility, are long gone, lost in the aftermath of a global pandemic, raging interest rates, and the betrayal of our friendship with our southern neighbors. That doesn't mean you'll be giving anything away by approving these homes, though, as the applicants will be paying our city for the privilege of building them. We get four-hundred-and-fifty-seven market rental homes, another one-hundred-and-fourteen below-market rates for those who, you know, keep our city running. Plus, we collect eight million dollars in development cost levies and another million dollars for public art. That ignores the real benefits that we will be employing Canadians, that they will be using Canadian lumber, Canadian concrete, Canadian steel to build these homes in a time where we really need to promote our own industry. Other sites will still come forward with more benefits. In fact, there's already a new forty-three space daycare proposed at forty-three forty-three West Tenth Avenue, a block to the east, under DP twenty-five triple-zero. West Tenth Avenue, a block to the east, under DP twenty-five triple zero nine eight. Under this council's leadership, the city has shown we can develop our own city owned lands, too. So maybe the West Point Gray Library will see an expansion, both in terms of how many books or ebooks it provides, as well as how many homes. These aspirations can't be delivered tonight alone, of course, but this can be a first step towards the better future that's laid out in our city plan. I urge you to approve these homes tonight, to help make that vision a reality, and I thank you once again for your time.
Great, thank you, Devon, and it's good seeing you in this chamber again. Okay, Speaker number thirty-one, Juman Singh Monga. Juman, are you on the phone?
Good evening, Mayor Sim.
Please go ahead.
The Honorable Mayor Sim, Honorable Members of City Council, residents and fellow stakeholders present today. My name is Juman Singh Monga, I'm a third-year student at the University of British Columbia and a proud resident of Vancouver, the best city in the world. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today in support of the rezoning proposal for forty-five forty-five to forty-five seventy-five West Tenth Avenue to a CD1 zone type. This initiative is a necessary and pragmatic response to the significant housing challenges facing not only students, but also young professionals and the broader Vancouver community. The reality of Vancouver's housing crisis is well documented. The combination of limited housing supply and soaring costs has made securing stable, affordable accommodation increasingly difficult. Students at UBC in particular are acutely impacted by this shortage. While the university provides some on-campus housing, demand far exceeds availability, forcing thousands of students into making uncomfortable financial decisions with their ends. As a result, we find ourselves competing for limited housing in surrounding neighborhoods such as West Point Gray, Kitzelano, and Dunbar, areas where rental prices are often on the far end in terms of affordability for those on student budgets. Around fifty-three percent of all UBC students live off-campus. When students are pushed into Vancouver's already constrained rental market, they contribute out of necessity to an increased strain on the existing supply that leaves less units for existing and new residents, and also drives up rental prices citywide. Families, young professionals, and other residents also feel the impact, as they too struggle to find housing at reasonable rates. It is evident that a lack of housing supply exacerbates affordability concerns for everyone in the city. This rezoning effort is an important step towards alleviating these pressures. By increasing the housing supply, particularly through comprehensive development of condominiums, this project provides meaningful relief to those struggling to find affordable accommodations, especially with the reservation of twenty percent of the residential floor area to be listed below market rate. Furthermore, by integrating the grocery store into the development, it ensures that the neighborhood around the Art Eagle Street retains key daily services. Mixed-use developments such as this one contribute to the long-term sustainability of the community along West Tenth by fostering economic activity and enhancing public engagement. Some concerns have been raised regarding the impact of this development on the character of the predominantly single-family zone neighborhood. However, I would like to argue that it is important to consider that what truly defines a neighborhood's character. A thriving, inclusive community is one that welcomes individuals from diverse backgrounds and income levels, something Vancouver has stood for since its inception in eighteen eighty-six. This possible urban growth does not diminish a neighborhood's character, least of all it's this segment of West Tenth, which stands as a confluence between the commercial archery for the area and the vibrant UBC campus. Rather, it extends it by ensuring that more people have the opportunity to contribute to and benefit from the community. This rezoning proposal may be seen as an isolated initiative, but personally, I see this as a representative of a broader necessary shift towards a more equitable and sustainable housing strategy for Vancouver. Approving this project will set a positive precedent for future developments that can possibly line West Tenth Avenue owing its already vibrant commercial ecosystem, as we have seen in the past, and other Art Eagle Streets in the city as a corridor for vibrant, young, and most importantly, affordable communities. Roughly, I've heard many speakers before me talk about how vibrant this community used to be. As a young resident, I would love to see this area bounce back to its former glory, which it most definitely deserves to do so, and enable the emergence of new small businesses and opportunities, which is the beating heart of the city we all love. I urge you all to support this proposal, recognizing the benefits it brings not only to students, but to the wider population seeking reasonable housing options in the city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Great, thank you very much. Now we have Speaker thirty-two, Dominic Sekoli. Dominic, are you on the phone? Oh, sorry, you're in person.
Great, slide is there. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sim and councillors, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Dominic Sekoli, I'm a resident of Point Gray Place, which is likely the building that's most affected by the proposed development. Like most of my neighbors, I support the increased density. Frankly, the village needs it, clearly it needs it. However, despite many community comments throughout the rezoning process, only relatively minor comments or adjustments have been made. The podium tower typology, and it's always been that since the beginning, is unsuitable for this site. The supermarket's oversized, the need for critical community amenities, including proper public spaces, has been seemingly ignored. Others have addressed these broader concerns, so I'm going to focus instead on just two main issues that affect our building, our residents. One of the most pressing concerns is a proper building separation. The proposed sixty-five-foot face-to-face separation is insufficient, it should be eighty feet. The other main issue is we're requesting a reduction at least in the height of the building proposed to the north of us, to a maximum of four floors. This is the main condition that I'm asking for. Next slide, please. This slide, this slide, excuse me, shows an east-west section through the middle of our building, with Tomi Street to the left and the proposed plaza to the right. This clearly illustrates just how imposing the development is. It's six stories, plus actually a small grade change towards the north, making it almost six and a half floors to the north and twenty-one stories to the east. Even at the Urban Design Panel, it was described as quote-unquote "a brutal treatment of Point Gray Place." Next slide, please. By shifting the tower slightly and reducing the height of Building One, it would significantly improve both the sense of openness and the functionality of the plaza. Additionally, adjusting the podium placement could strengthen that pedestrian connection between Tenth and Ninth Avenues, which we've heard spoken about tonight. Next slide, please. This is a view from BGO's video of that north-south connection towards Ninth Avenue. As it stands, the private gardens flanking the walkway make that space in between much too narrow and more private than public. Expanding this corridor with publicly accessible landscaping would create a much more functional pedestrian connection. Next slide, please. This is the north-south section through Point Gray Place and the proposed building number one to the north. Ninth Avenue here is on the left and West Tenth is on the right. This view provides an even better evidence of that negative impact of this massive development on our building and on our residents. Six stories to the north, plus that small elevation gain which makes it even taller, and beyond that, to the east is a narrow gap and that six-plus-one-story podium, and of course, the twenty-one-story tower directly to the east. This is what has left myself and many other residents of Point Gray Place feeling completely boxed in on those two sides, as many residents, including myself, only face north or east, so that feeling of being closed in, barely able to see the sky in some cases, is very real. Next slide, please. This is why we're urging a reduction in height for Building One, while a broader reduction in the podium is unlikely. We strongly request lowering Building One to four floors at most. That area could also easily be accommodated in one of the towers or both towers, as it's already super tall, so an extra floor, I mean, realistically, there's going to be less impact, negative impact to that, as opposed to the positive gain of reducing the height of that building. Even at four floors, the feeling of being boxed in would be significantly improved. There's also serious concerns about noise from the proposed amenity building on top of the podium. Could this amenity space not be internalized in the tower instead? Next slide, please. Here you see another view of the existing separation with the required eighty-foot dimension there stated. It's not just a request, it is actually policy, of course. Next slide, please. City guidelines demanded. Next slide, please. Even the MIRP, or the moderate-income rental housing pilot program, which this project falls under, developments must consider and respect transitions to surrounding areas. Next slide, please. Even the Broadway Plan, you can't really see it there, but there's a requirement for eighty feet. I'm just curious why that's not being applied to our site. Next slide, please. So wrapping up with this slide, we support the rental and communal units on the site. We want to see this project move forward in a way that benefits the entire community. However, many past concerns have been seemingly ignored, and the Urban Design Panel's strongest criticisms have been brushed aside in favor of superficial tweaks. If you haven't already, I wish you would read the transcripts, they are eye-opening. In closing, we ask for a genuine commitment from the developer to create a project that we can all be proud of. We know that they're capable of it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And I believe we have another speaker coming in. Sarah?
I really do not take for granted the privilege to get to speak here, so thank you to the mayor and council and staff and applicants and anyone who, you know, lets us do that. I won't spend too much time on affordability because I'm a neighborhood resident tree hugger, so I'll get, I'll move on to that quick, but, you know, there's been enough studies and articles already written about how density is not making things more affordable. So I just urge people to acknowledge and read those. So just getting straight to trees, and there's some curious questions, I know I'm not allowed to ask questions, but if the applicant could be so kind to answer them after, that'd be fantastic, if not, they're just curious questions for the ether. So based on the tree protection bylaw, where is it? And again, I'm learning, so if I'm wrong here, I'm sorry, but from my interpretation of reading, the number of trees required on a site, for a site of this size, which is nearly twelve thousand square meters, it says it's required to have two hundred trees. Now, with exceptions of, the exceptions of, you know, applying for permits to remove certain ones, those would be taken off of the number. So I guess my curious questions are just currently how many trees exist there? And then also, oh no, I lost the page, but in the, in your report or referral, or is I did see anyways that there were a couple of trees, oh, here it is. That will need to be removed, and I guess we'll apply for permits to do that, so, yeah, those are my curious questions to the applicant. If you know the answer, two hundred trees would be great, I think that would be awesome for people living in that area. I'm not against development or building, clearly it sounds like from the people spoke today that the area needs obviously a grocery store and places for people to live. I don't believe it's affordable, but awesome to those people who will get to live here. And if they had two hundred trees around, that would be sweet, too. It improves mental health, it improves the temperature on the ground, and we're in an ever-growing climate issue with increasing temperatures. And why not, guys? Trees are cool. So anyways, I'm sure, I don't know, because it's not in your plan, maybe you already are looking ahead to that, but I'm just here to advocate for that, so thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you very much. Clerk, do we have anyone else in the queue there?
None on the line, no.
Okay, this is the third and final call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free at one E three 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 five three eight six ten, followed by participant code one oh six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on next and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. So we will take a five-minute break to see if anyone else wants to call in.
Go for a little walk around.
All right. He's on the line? Okay, perfect. Okay. All right, I'm going to start up again, guys. Great. Hi, everyone. We're just going to start it up again, please. Thank you. Okay, Clerk, do we have any other speakers? Yeah, that's right, we're watching all of you. Just kidding.
No more speakers, Mayor.
No more speakers. Okay, seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing that there are few or no public comments received after five P M, I'm now going to close the receipt of public comments. So with that, can we get a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. Okay, so this public hearing has been referred to the March eleventh council meeting, and I do want to remind council not to engage in any discussions on this item until that time. So with that, thank you, everyone. Been a long night. Appreciate it.